Good evening. Thank you all for joining us. We obviously have a very big and important agenda tonight, so I'd like to ask everyone to be ready to go. Individuals can speak for three minutes. Presidents and Association Chairman can speak for five. We'll have a little timer here. When you hear the alarm go off, we'd like to ask you to please wrap up your statement. To begin the meeting, I'd like to ask if we have an approval for the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right? Yes. Who was this? Mr. McCartney. I'd like to introduce my fellow board members, starting with one of our newest members, Mr. Hector De La Torres. Next to him, Mr. Alexander Spence, Ms. Jacqueline Scott, Mr. Steve Gannon. On my right, we have Mr. Byron Bryan Donaldson, Mr. Whitney Dutton, Kevin Buckley, Ms. Sherri McCartney, and I am Patrick McTeague. With that, I'd like to go ahead and move to case number... Well, because of the size of the agenda, we're going to ask the board if they would like to reorder some things. Item number one...
I'm sorry, can I also get a board roll call, please?
Beg your pardon?
I need to do board roll call.
Again?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Here.
Mr. Dutton?
Here.
Mr. Gannon?
Yeah.
Mrs. McCartney?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Spence?
Here.
Mr. De La Torres?
Here.
And Chairman Teague?
Here.
Okay, so again, also, we'll introduce city staff. If I could have Ms. Ella Parker introduce members of her staff that are here this evening?
Absolutely. Good evening, Ella Parker, Deputy Director, Development Services Department. With us here tonight, we have Anthony Barado, Development Services Director. To my right, Duane Spence, interim city attorney. We've also got Adam Schnell, Jim Hetzel, Carlaan Devonish, Lorraine Tappin, Tyler LaForme, Michael Ferreira. From our CRA staff, we have CRA Director Clarence Woods, and we have Sijah Omentjivar. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number one has requested a deferral. Is there anyone from that item that would like to speak? Otherwise, I will ask the board if they wish to defer item number one to our next meeting.
I'll move to defer.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And the date certain on the next meeting?
19th.
Okay, so, and did you have a question, Mr. Spence? No, okay. So, all members have voted to move item number one to the next meeting. And now, again, in light of the size of the agendas and the meeting tonight, we wanted to reorder things. The suggested order would be item number two, then item number six, and number seven, and then it would get back in the order of three, four, or five. So, does the board wish to support moving those agenda items to expedite things? Okay, did you see the second? That came from who? Whitney? Mr. Dutton did the second.
Site visit.
Would you like me to read those case numbers?
Yes.
So, yes, we're going to take item number two, which is UDP S25014. Then next will be item number six, UDP T25010. Then item number seven, which is UDP L25003. And then we will continue with three, four, or five. In the... Okay. So, moving on to case number two, will be UDP S25014. Disclosures, Mr. De La Torres. Any disclosures about this item?
I did speak to Stephen Tilbrook over the phone.
Okay, Mr. Spence?
Yes, I was contacted by Stephen Tilbrook, and I did make a site visit.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, I spoke to the applicant's attorney, Steve Tilbrook.
Okay, Mr. Gannon?
Site visit and a voicemail from the applicant's attorney.
Mr. Donaldson?
I spoke to the applicant's attorney, and I did a site visit.
Mr. Dutton?
Site visit and voicemail and text message from the attorney.
Mr. Buckley?
A call from Steve Tilbrook, the applicant's attorney, and a site visit.
Ms. McCartney?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney, Mr. Tilbrook.
I also spoke with Mr. Tilbrook, and I did a site visit.
Okay.
Good evening. There we go. Steve Tilbrook with Ackerman Law Firm in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Address is 201 East Las Olas Boulevard. Thank you for your service. Thank you for having us tonight. We're here on behalf of Holy Cross Hospital, which has a project planned at 200 East Sunrise Boulevard. I'd like to introduce our project team. Very pleased to introduce Pierre Monis, who's the President and CEO of Holy Cross Health. We also have with us Bria Ellis, our owner's representative for Holy Cross Health. Bria's right in the back. We tried to be in this side of the hall. Daniel Breitner with Breitner Architecture is our project architect. And we also have Tom Hargritt, who's with Kimley Horn, the project landscape architect. They're here to answer any questions in the event that they come up. We also have several members of the Holy Cross family, including the board members, executive team, and medical staff, that are also here to support the item. But in the interest of time, we know that you've got a long agenda, I'd just like to recognize them, offer them an opportunity to stand up and be recognized. Go ahead and stand up or wave.
So, Mr. Tilbrook, as you have these individuals stand, I think it'd be a good opportunity to swear in anyone who will be speaking on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spence.
Sure.
Most of our folks aren't going to speak, that we know of, thank goodness. But I will ask Pierre and Daniel and Bria to stand up, and Tom, if he's here, and will be sworn in, to answer questions.
And any other members of the public that are going to speak on this item? If you would please stand, raise your hands at this moment. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much. When you approach the podium and state your name, please also state the fact that you have been sworn. Thank you.
Do you want them to come to the podium now?
No, when they testify.
Okay, great. Hopefully, we're here to answer any questions. We've got a really fantastic team here to support, but we're not going to take your time with individual support, but they're here in case you have any particular questions. With that, I'd like to introduce Pierre Monis, and allow Pierre to say a few words of welcome on behalf of Holy Cross Health.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. Pierre Monis, President and CEO of Holy Cross Health. And as a President and CEO of Holy Cross Health, excited to be here and on behalf of the board, the executive leadership team of Holy Cross Hospital, I want to thank you for your service as a board, and thank you for your consideration for the application for the Holy Cross Comprehensive Outpatient Center and Emergency Department. My friends, the center and this hearing is a culmination of many years of hard work and effort to expand high-quality health care in this area. In the growing Fort Lauderdale community, we want to bring compassionate health care to everyone close to home and close to where they live. This center will be more than just a building. The center will represent Holy Cross Health's commitment to providing an unwavering commitment to health, healing, and great outcomes, and we've been doing so in this community since 1955. We're actually celebrating 70 years being in this community this year. So, thank you again for your consideration. We look forward to telling you all these details, and we look forward to serving you and your family for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. We do have a brief PowerPoint presentation. I'll try to make it brief. It's about 15 slides, and I'll go through them as quickly as possible, make sure I can run this properly. Obviously, we're here for conditional use approval, site plan approval, whoops, for the Holy Cross Comprehensive Outpatient Center and Emergency Department at 200 East Sunrise Boulevard. Holy Cross Health is a private nonprofit community hospital that opened in 1955. Holy Cross is a member of the Trinity Health System, which is a national health system, the largest Catholic health system in the country. Holy Cross is a full-service hospital and comprehensive clinic, and one of the largest employers in Fort Lauderdale. Holy Cross Health Sunrise, which is the new project we're here to talk about, is an outpatient center, a comprehensive outpatient center, and emergency department. The goals and objectives of this project are to provide equitable access to health care, both emergency and specialty care at this facility, to support community wellness through health equity, aging-in-place, and specialty clinics, and to provide smart economic development to stimulate investment, and that's what hospitals do. They stimulate nearby investment, and they create high-paying jobs that happen to be located in Fort Lauderdale's CRA. And I understand we're looking at likely over 200 high-paying jobs at this location. This complements the investment and the care provided by Holy Cross Health. Currently, at the LA Lee YMCA Mizel Community Center, we have a facility, a health care facility there, and this is really to supplement and build on that legacy. The site, the site's at 200 East Sunrise Boulevard. It's currently a strip shopping center. It's a former automobile dealership. It's currently owned, still owned by Holman Automotive. The zoning is Northwest Rack M U N E. Land use is the Northwest Rack, so we're in the downtown rack. The project goal is to achieve compliance with the Northwest Master Plan Design Guidelines, which basically leads us to demolish the existing strip center building, which is not consistent with the design guidelines, and to provide new construction that meets the design guidelines in the form of a two-story health center and a parking garage to the rear that has shielding, so you really can't tell it's a parking garage. This is an elevation along Sunrise Boulevard. The building is at the street. It provides a fantastic street frontage with excellent architecture and transparency, and it also creates a walkable environment along Sunrise Boulevard. The parking garage is located behind the building, so it's shielded from pedestrians and vehicles along Sunrise, and has transparency in the form of glass and also upgraded superior materials, particularly along Sunrise Boulevard. This is a nighttime image. You can see the translucent, transparent transparency of the glass. Another image from the slightly elevated perspective, looking to the southwest, you can see the parking garage in the rear and how it's convenient to the center but shielded from Sunrise Boulevard. Another view from a nighttime perspective. Holy Cross Health's program is related to community need. We are hoping that this, we're expecting this project meets the needs of the growing downtown community. As residential communities grow, they need health care to support them. And so, we're also going to be addressing the needs of the Northwest community, the CRA, and the Northwest community of Fort Lauderdale, which has been historically underserved for health care over the years, and we're looking forward to continuing to meet that Another component of the emergency department is it reduces emergency department overload at other hospitals, including the existing Holy Cross campus in northeast Fort Lauderdale. It streamlines the continuity of care by providing emergency, imaging, specialty care altogether in a seamless environment, and addressing chronic illness as well. This is the site plan. Hopefully, you can see it from the screen. It should be in your package as well. It's a two-story health center directly on Sunrise Boulevard with a two-floor parking garage. Just a few numbers. The emergency department on the ground floor on the west side of the building is 11,721 square feet. There's 12 treatment rooms within the emergency department. It also has its own imaging suite. On the first floor, the east side of the first floor, is the outpatient center that works consistent with the emergency department. The emergency department is 24/7 operation. The outpatient is not, but it has 18 treatment rooms, including specialty care. On the second floor, that we will be building out as the need arises, a 20,000-square-foot extension of the medical clinic. The shell will be there, and as we define the needs for the community, we'll be tailoring the second floor to the needs of the community. There's potentially a surgical suite, but there will definitely be medical care and outpatient, as well as an MRI suite as part of this project as well. The parking garage is on the north-south side of the project. There's a 141 enclosed parking spaces within the garage, whereas the code requires 128 spaces. We're providing excess parking and provides easy access to health care, and there's a drop-off location so folks can easily get into the emergency department. On the west side of the emergency department, there's also an ambulance drop-off on the exterior that's just for ambulances, provides easy access for ambulances when there are urgent care needs. This is the landscape plan. Lot, a lot, a lot to say here, other than we're enhancing the pedestrian environment by providing a significant amount of landscape directly at the street, including street trees, shade trees, and with a focus on native materials. In addition, we're going to be providing enhanced drainage at this facility. Because it's a health care facility, we want to make sure that we don't have any drainage incidents, and we're burying and upgrading all of the utilities. On the west side of the building, there is an FPL line that provides service for all of downtown. That's a significant cost to underline it, underground it, but that's what we're going to be doing to meet the design guidelines. I'm going to show you a few more images. This is the emergency department on the west side. You can see the drop-off at that location. Also, this is on Sunrise Boulevard, the nighttime view. This is a close-up of the emergency drop-off. This is looking towards the northeast nighttime view. And this is, between the parking garage and the health care facility, there is a corridor, and it's, there will be cover at the entrances so that there's a seamless transition from parking directly into the building and an environment that's safe and clean. So, the project steps and timelines. We've been through the DRC process. We've got DRC sign-offs. We've conducted public participation. Which really, when you represent Holy Cross, it's great to bring that project to the community. We've got a lot of community support. There should be support in your backup. We also have a letter of support from the South Middle River Association. We're really excited to see this adjacent to their neighborhood. Our goal is to finish the first phase of the project, which is the ground floor, have it occupied by June of 2027. It's an aggressive timeline, but that's what we're going to meet. The project steps and schedule. This is a site plan level three, so it's a conditional use approval. Actually, we've been through this. We're bringing it to you for approval tonight. And the reason that it's before you, if this was just a doctor's office or just a medical clinic, it's permitted as a matter of right under the Northwest Rack zoning. But this is distinguishable because it's related to a hospital, and it's a hospital emergency department. Even though many components of this project, the outpatient and the clinic components, would be permitted as a matter of right, we're here because the hospital component requires a conditional use approval. And that's, this is the criteria for the conditional use approval. We're almost finished. I'm not going to go through all the criteria, but I'll just summarize by saying this project is consistent with and compatible with the Northwest Rack community and the CRA. It supports the growth of the downtown and provides a significant economic investment and stimulus in the CRA. There's over 200 jobs that'll be created, and not just any jobs, high-paying medical jobs for people that live and work directly in that area. It also provides service. It's serving the health care needs, which is an inherent benefit to the community. It's located along a commercial corridor, so it doesn't impact adjacent neighborhoods. And in, you know, in summary, it improves the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and that's the criteria for conditional use approval. I'd like to thank your staff for working with us over the past year to make this the best project it can be, to bring it to you for your, hopefully, easy approval tonight. I'd like to thank you for your service. I know it's going to be a long night, so we're going to sum up our presentation. We're here to answer any questions. We have architects, landscape architects, medical directors, and the whole Holy Cross team. And if it's okay, if there is public comment, we'd like to reserve a moment for rebuttal after the public comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any members of the board that have questions for the applicant at this time?
I do, but I'll wait till after the public comment.
Okay. Are there members of the public that would like to speak on this item? I do have someone that might, Ms. Olga Zamora? Yes, ma'am. If there are any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item, just kind of queue up right behind the podium. Ms. Zamora, if you'll just tell us your name and address?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair, and members of the board. My name is Olga Zamora. I live at 1115 Northwest 3rd Avenue. I am a resident and homeowner in the South Middle River Civic Association neighborhood, and as Mr. Tilbrook mentioned in his presentation to you, it's the neighborhood directly across Sunrise Boulevard from the subject property. So, that is where the interest in this particular project lies. I did prepare some written remarks that I would like to read into the record. First, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you and the board. I am speaking in my personal capacity this evening, and I wanted to start off by saying that I don't think of myself as a citizen against virtually everything. But when I did hear about this project, I did pause because I thought to myself, I asked, what will this look like? And how will it impact not only the community that it's in, but the surrounding neighborhoods? Thankfully, there is backup documentation for the Design Review Committee, and I met Mr. Tilbrook and his team over a Zoom meeting, and also at, when he visited with Breitner Architecture representatives to the South Middle River Civic Association in our general meeting. And I have some points that I would like to place into the record. It's a regurgitation of something that he already said, but I feel it's important to put it from a resident's perspective. A couple of things about this project have stood out to me. First, even though Holy Cross is not retail or restaurants or housing, it is, obviously, care and services that potentially provide, have the potential of providing very meaningful services to the surrounding community, especially for those of us who are planning to age in place. The second thing that has, I appreciate as a resident and homeowner, is, like he mentioned this evening, is their adherence to the Northwest Progressive Design Plan. It's a strong plan that makes sure that anybody building in this area has a positive effect by preserving healthy trees, planting wind-resistant trees, being considerate of the pedestrians and the cyclists, installing lighting that benefits the area, and also, architecture that is quality and nature, not just a box. And the last thing that also stood out to me is that the alternative, as most of you disclosed, having been to the site, the alternative is either an empty building with nothing in it, or a new tenant taking over a lot that proudly displays surface parking along Sunrise Boulevard, or something that comes in through Live Local. And I feel like the residents in the neighborhood deserve a good project, and I feel like this is a good project, and it could help usher in real urban renewal along Sunrise Boulevard and real beautification. So, obviously, I support it, and I know that several neighbors are very excited about this, and our community has been hoping for something like this for a very long time. So, thank you so much for your time. I support staff's recommendation, and I support the project that they've submitted to you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zamora. Are there any more members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and a vote. Mrs. Scott, excuse me, Mrs. Scott, I believe you had some...
Thank you, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Number one, this is going to be an emergency room, right? And are there any admission beds to anywhere for true acute emergencies?
So, the definition of an emergency room, an off-site emergency room, which is not affiliated with, directly with a hospital on-site, is there's a limit on the stay of 24 hours. So, the objective is, and first of all, this is, this is a facility that does not, does not take or care for the most acute of the cases, like gunshot wounds, car accidents. Those will be directed to the acute care hospitals like Holy Cross, Broward General, that provide acute care. So, this is sub-acute care. I'm not sure that's the right term, but that's what I call it.
I understand. That's what I thought.
And the stays will be less than 24 hours. If there is a need for care that goes beyond 24 hours, the patient would be transported to another hospital or care facility that's designed to care for them.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. The other thing is, what happens to a patient that has an emergency, but it's not life or death? Let's say it's a laceration big enough where you need stitches, et cetera, but I have no insurance. What happens to that patient?
Well, I may have to call on Pierre to help me with that one.
I'm only asking because of, you know...
Our standard answer is, everyone is served at this hospital. Everyone will be served.
Well, I used to work in the ER, so I kind of know some of the stuff that goes on.
How they're served, I may ask Pierre if he can help address that question for people that are uninsured.
Yeah, so, from an MTA standpoint, which is our standard of care for any kind of emergency setting, that we take care of any patient regardless of ability to pay. So, we make sure they're stabilized, they're taken care of, and being a not-for-profit, faith-based institution, we find ways to help individuals from a charitable giving standpoint or connect them to local resources.
So, you won't turn away minor lacerations and things like that and send them to Broward or whatever? You'll handle it?
No, that's correct. We will handle it.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay. I think that answers my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Do we have a motion? Mr. Dutton, did you?
This is a motion to approve. I move to adopt the resolution approving a site plan level three, case number UDP S25014, based on the following findings of fact, the facts in the city staff report and/or the testimony heard by the applicant, and the board hereby finds that the application meets the standards and requirements in the ULDR and criteria for the proposed use as cited in the resolution. If conditions state, the approval of the application is subject to all conditions included in the city staff report, and state any other applicable conditions on the record.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
So, if I can read the title of the resolution before the vote?
Please.
Planning and zoning board resolution number 2510. A resolution of the planning and zoning board of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan level three, conditional use development permit for 11,721 square-foot development, outpatient, emergency department, and a 30,071 square-foot feet of medical clinic space for the property located at 200 East South, I'm sorry, 200 East Sunrise Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and the Northwest Regional Activity Center, mixed-use northeast district. Case number UDP S25014, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for ineffective data.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Mrs. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torres?
Yes.
And Patrick McTeague?
Yes.
Vote passes.
Moving right along, item number six, UDP dash 25010. Mr. Spence? Mr. Spence, are there any disclosures on those?
No disclosures.
Neither 6 nor 7, right?
That's correct.
Can they be heard at the same time and voted independently?
No, they need to be heard and voted separately.
Heard independently, very good. So again, that was item number 6, UDP T5010, no disclosures. Mr. Hanson.
Good evening, Jim Hetzel, Principal Urban Planner.
Everyone, please exit as quietly as possible.
Good evening, Jim Hetzel, Principal Planner with DSD. Thank you for accommodating this schedule on the agenda, moving me up. My belly appreciates it, appreciates it as well. But case UDP T25010 is an amendment to the city's Unified Flex policy to reallocate affordable flex units to the unified flex units. And I'll describe that a little bit more in detail in the presentation. So a little bit of background information, in 2018, the city adopted a unified flex strategy and policy for the city. What it did is it took 18 different geographic zones, which is the map on the left that you see, throughout the entire city and collapsed it into a single unified zone for allocating flex units along the major corridors in the city and in the regional activity centers. That was a smart growth initiative and focus that we did as planners at the direction of our city commission. There is also a component of this policy where it's citywide application for non-residential commercial flex, it's called, and also for affordable housing flex units. So some things have happened since 2018 that encourages affordable housing throughout the city. One of them is in 2020, the city actually formally adopted affordable housing regulations in the city, which focus on an incentive-based program for encouraging construction of affordable housing units. There's also what happened in 2022, which is the, I'm sorry, I have the backwards county, I'm going out of order, but the county land use plan also had a policy called the Geller Amendment, that's what it's commonly referred to, that encouraged affordable housing through incentives as well, had a payout in lieu of option, as, so does the city. And then the last thing that pretty, happened pretty recently, is the Live Local Act, which I think everyone has heard about, which is a state law that allows affordable housing construction throughout the city at different zoning categories, such as commercial, industrial, mixed use. And that basically allows a developer to do 40% of construction of affordable housing on those type of zoning categories. And it's an incentive base as well to get affordable housing in throughout the city. So since 2018, when the city adopted the Unified Flex policy, these other policies and laws came into place. So there's options for developers to come in or property owners seeking to construct affordable housing and incentivizing it. What that has resulted in is our pool of units, which is our unified pool of units, had a separate line item for affordable housing, because back in 2018, none of these policies existed. So staff recommended having a separate line item in our flex policy for affordable housing. Well, what has happened is it's become stagnant. Nobody's asking for it because there's other policies and options available for the construction of affordable housing. What we're proposing as staff is looking at these unused, just sitting there pool of affordable units, to reallocate them to the Unified Flex policy area, which is a limited area throughout the city, which was depicted on that map in red, which is along the corridors in our regional activity centers. That will open up some units available for other programs in the city. So the end result would be a total, as you can see, about 17, 1,0736 reallocated or available once we do the reallocation. So that would be the available affordable units getting reallocated to the flex units. And some of the benefits of this, it helps with our transfer development rate program. It also helps for properties that are ineligible for the other policies and law for affordable housing. It also can still be used for an affordable housing project. They won't preclude us allocating the flex for an affordable housing project. And it's just a good policy to move forward, and it will, you know, permit redevelopment units requests as we move forward as well, because that's a policy we haven't, unable to attack, request basically because we have available flex units. That's a county policy that they release in 500 units at a time, they're called redevelopment units. We can't ask for those until we exhaust our flex units total. So we're kind of limited there as well. So these are just some of the benefits of doing this effort. So acting as the local planning agency, basically what staff is requesting is a recommendation to move this policy forward to the city commission for approval. It does not require for our county to approve it, this is a local policy that requires our city commission to adopt. And with that, I will take any questions.
Are there any questions, Mr. Gannon? Yes. So I was under the impression we were out of flex units, and, but, but you're saying we haven't asked Broward County for any, I mean, these affordable ones were there, but they didn't count as the flex units for anything? Can you explain a little bit?
So, yeah, interesting. So we did have, we ran out of flex units, but there was a separate line item that was restricted for affordable housing projects. That's what we're talking about this evening. That, on the county's view, Broward County views that as you have available flex units. We were restricting ourselves basically by having this set aside, and that restricted us what, now we have an unused pool of units.
Got it. Okay, thanks. Ms. McCartney? No? Any other members of the board have any questions? Okay. Mr. Spence, does the public get to speak on this item?
Yes.
Okay. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and a vote. I'll make a motion if I can figure out which one it is. Yeah. If not, it's only UDR. ULDR? Let's be considered a UDR.
So this wouldn't be on your cheat sheet. It's adoption of a policy, so you can just move to approve.
Move to approve, okay.
I move to approve case number UDP T25010.
Second. Who had the second? Did you? I didn't see it either. Okay. Mr. Dutton.
Y'all ready for the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torres?
Yes.
And Chairman Teague?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item number 7, UDP L25003. Item number 7, let's see.
Good evening, Nectaria Chalkis, on behalf of Pinnacle Corporate Park.
Let me do disclosures real quick, sorry.
Sure.
Are there any disclosures, Mr. De La Torres? Mr. Spence?
No.
Ms. Scott?
I spoke to Ms. Chalkis, Cheveria, what, how you, I don't know if I said it right.
Mr. Gannon?
Spoke to Ms. Chalkis.
Mr. Donaldson?
I drove past the parcels.
Mr. Dutton?
No.
Mr. Buckley?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Ms. McCartney?
Spoke with the applicant's attorney, Ms. Chalkis.
And I also spoke with applicant's attorney. Thank you. Floor, Chair.
Thank you. Nectaria Chalkis again, with the firm Lockery &amp; Chalkis, on behalf of Pinnacle Corporate Park. My client's property is actually the, the property that has the little yellow asterisk on this aerial. The property is part of the newly enacted, and when I say newly, I mean in the last year, the Uptown Urban Village Transit Oriented Development Area. That area is outlined on this aerial in the dark old black line. As part of that transit-oriented development, there were restrictions on where you could put residential units. And as, as part of that, the restriction was that you could not have residential in the area that was, that is highlighted in red on this particular graphic, that includes my client's property because of its proximity to the airport. So, and the, the concern was that there was noise and compatibility issues. However, since that time, we have had meetings with the airport, we have had discussions with the county and city staff, and it's been determined that it is appropriate and okay to have residential and to expand the scope of where you could have residential in the transit-oriented development area. And we'll address any further restrictions that are needed in the city's land development regulations. So eventually, we'll be coming back to you with a code amendment that'll further refine some of the requirements for residential in this area, but for now, it simply doesn't really need to be in the comprehensive plan. And the way that looks, this is how this board and the city commission adopted the Uptown Urban Village Transit Oriented Development Area. It adopted a number, over 4,000 units for this area. And in the notes, in the comments, you can see there's a number of, there's actually seven comments that were adopted as part of that. And at the very bottom, it said, this is where you can have residential. And unfortunately, the area in red was an area that was excluded from having residential. And we simply are now, with this amendment, opening that up to be eligible for residential development. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Scott, no? Anyone? Okay. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and a vote.
So Chair, if I can just provide the board with a little guidance. This is a land use plan amendment. On this item, you are serving as a local planning agency and determining whether or not to recommend the deletion of this language to the city commission on the city's comprehensive plan.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification.
Question, Chair.
Yes.
Why was it excluded? She mentioned it was at one.
Yeah. It, it was excluded because at that time, the city was relying on a master plan map that was adopted by, or not adopted, it was a master plan map that the airport had for the future expansion of the runway at FXE. And that map had certain contours and decibel levels that included certain parts of that red area on that aerial. And as a result, there were some concerns about having residential in that area. And at the time, we said, let's just get this, the amendment, the Uptown passed, because it includes a lot more than just the red area. And we'll deal with the airport restriction at a later date. And so here we are, we're at a later date now, and we're, we're dealing with it. But the, the map that should be relied upon for land use decisions is actually a 2015 map that was adopted, and that's pursuant to FAA regulations and the way they, they evaluate land use decisions for purposes of compatibility near airports. And that map had us outside of the contour areas. So for this particular property, we believe, and we've actually had the noise contours tested and the noise levels tested, actually tested by acoustical engineers on the property, and we're simply outside of any areas of concern.
So, so to provide further clarity in terms of what you're doing tonight, if you were to approve this, is to remove language that specifically states residential uses are only permitted within the Uptown TOD boundaries east of Powerline Road and north of Cypress Creek Road and east of Andrews Avenue, south of Cypress Creek Road. State statute provides for the requirement for airport zoning regulations. This is a land use plan regulation that the zoning is intended to implement. So this is a little more difficult to amend and change. There's no need for this type of restriction within the land use plan. The concerns with regards to the statutory restrictions on airport zoning can be handled in the ULDR at the commission level and with, with review of the planning and zoning board. So removing this restriction doesn't, doesn't necessarily remove the city's ability to remain in compliance with the state statute of regards to airport regulations.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Do we have a motion? Mr. Gannon? I move to recommend approval of case number L, UDP L25003, to amend the city of Fort Lauderdale comprehensive plan, future land use element, Uptown Transit Oriented Development designation, amending restriction on residential use east of Powerline Road, south Cypress Creek Road, west of Florida CX6 Railroad. And the board hereby finds that the text amendments to ULDR consistent with the comprehensive plan. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torres?
Yes.
And Chairman Teague?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number 3, UDP S24035. Disclosures, Mr. De La Torres?
Yes, I met with the attorney, Stephanie Toothaker, and the applicant in my office.
Mr. Spence?
Yes, I met with the applicant, Mr. Gareth Moore, the agent, Ms. Stephanie Toothaker, along with ex-attorney Chris Smith.
Before you go further, I understand that a couple of members may have also received email communications. You would also disclose those at this time as well.
Okay, yes. I also received email communications from Ms. Ginny Heb and Yurides Miranda Lopez. I also spoken to Ms. Virginia Heb, and I also did conduct a site visit.
And for the same, any phone calls that weren't, and also, did anyone reach out to you by phone? If you'll just explain that, yes, you got phone calls from whoever it was, public, or were those mentioned? Just so you get them, okay.
Yes, they were already mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yes, I spoke to the applicant's attorney. I have never, ever seen so many people reach out against a project since I've been involved. So I, I can't even name all the names of the people that spoke to me. I also spoke to Commissioner Glassman, and I spoke to Commissioner Sorensen, and I apologize that I can't name all of you that I spoke to.
Mr. Gannon? Good, okay. Numerous site visits, communications with the various, with the applicant and the applicant's attorney, presentations, attended presentations at Civic Association Meeting, CBA, Lauderdale Beach HOA, Dolphin Isles, spoke with Commissioner Glassman, numerous emails, as everyone has said, from residents and civic association, but forwarded through the P and Z as well directly to me, and phone calls from residents. And for the record, I'm, I'm the president of Lauderdale Beach HOA, the neighborhood which lies directly across A1A from this project. I have remained distanced from the neighboring, neighborhood voting and any lobbying and has always remained impartial until this hearing is complete and all testimony, comments from all parties have been heard. Very good. Mr. Donaldson?
I attended CBA presentation, a Dolphin Isles presentation, site visits, conversations with the applicant's attorney, all of the communication that was forwarded by the planning and zoning office. Also received probably three dozen phone calls that went to voicemail, did speak to some individuals, also received over 35 emails and various letters.
Mr. Dutton?
Spoke with the applicant, the applicant's attorney, Ms. Toothaker, Mr. Glassman, Mr. Sorensen, numerous calls, phone calls from residents in Dolphin Isles, Central Beach, or I'm sorry, it's.
North.
Lauderdale Beach, yeah. Lauderdale Beach, emails, one phone call from a Dolphin resident, Dolphin Isles resident, and that's about it.
Mr. Buckley?
Made a site visit, spoke with the applicant's attorney, received, I can't how many emails that I, were either forwarded from planning or received directly, half a dozen phone calls, six or seven voicemails, and some of the residents, actually, I did speak to a couple of residents.
Ms. McCartney?
Mr. Chair, I too spoke with the applicant and the applicant's attorney, had numerous contact by residents, both near and far from this project. I spoke with some of them, but not all of them, and I received much communication forwarded from staff.
Okay. I also received numerous emails for and against, spoke with Mr. Alan Zimmern, spoke with the applicant's counsel, I spoke with the applicant, Mr. Mike Lambrix, Ms. Ella Parker, and received multiple calls from surrounding residents.
Chair, I forgot to say that I also did a site visit.
I also did a site visit, yes.
Same, did two site visits, different times to. Same, did two site visits, different times to check on the traffic over there.
Thank you.
So Chair, if I could recommend swearing in the public at this time?
I think that's good. Everyone wishing to speak, if you'll please raise your right hand, and Mr. Spence will swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All these people.
Thank you. And when you approach the podium and state your name and address, please also state whether or not you have been sworn. Thank you.
And also, I'll reiterate that individuals have three minutes to speak, presidents of associations have five minutes. I'll ask that there's no clapping, or booing, or cheering, or anything. We need to remain professional. There's a lot of people here. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. So please just come up. And it's also very important to keep, as best you can, the information new, new topics, new ideas, not everybody repeating the same thing because it'll, people will gloss over. So with that, I thank you. Ms. Toothaker?
All right. Chair, members of the board, Stephanie Toothaker, on behalf of the applicant Gareth Moore, who is here with me this evening, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. Before I get into the actual presentation, I wanted to go over a little bit of history about this section of the Central Beach. So I'm showing you just here an aerial context of where this building sits. You can see it's outlined in red. And I think it's really important for context to understand that this is not next to a single-family neighborhood. It's next to A1A on the east side. It's next to multifamily on the west of it. There's an entire block of multifamily before you get to single-family. Some of the projects that are around it are, I'm sorry, some of the buildings that are around it, St. Pius Catholic Church, Fountains, Ocean Garden Condo, Everglades, Cambria, Oberge, Whitey Grit, The Palms, Trade Winds by the Sea, and The View. And I'm going to talk about those a little bit more. This is a slide that we prepared because we think it's really important to understand. I saw the flyers, too, by the way. They kept crossing my desk. And everyone keeps saying that we're shadowing over the intercoastal, we're shadowing over the beach, we're shadowing over single-family homes. This building is not near the beach, it's not near the intercoastal, and it's certainly not adjacent to single-family homes, and not the ones, I think, a majority of the ones that you're going to hear from tonight. It's also completely in context with the buildings that you see around it. We color-coded these. I think many of you, I know we've shared this with the neighborhoods before, so this is something that also, I think, has been floating around. But I think it just shows the context of the fact that this is not a standalone building that's in the middle of a barren wasteland of single-family homes. It's not. It actually is in context with all of the buildings that are around it. And you can see some of those, they're shaded in different colors by their heights, and I'm going to talk about them in a little bit more detail. And I think this is really important, and I'm just going to spend a few minutes going through this. So let me talk a little bit about the history of this section of the Central Beach. And this, in fact, is the Central Beach. We are in the Central Beach, we are part of the Central Beach Alliance, we are not a member of the other neighborhood associations that you're going to hear from. So the Whitey Grit. The Whitey Grit is 85 units to the acre. Eighty-five units to the acre. That is an extremely dense project. It's 17 stories, but it's 17 stories by 1970 standards. Seventeen stories by 1970 standards was about eight-foot ceilings. So you have a very different context for what was approved at the time. Again, 85 units to the acre, 17 stories for the Whitey Grit, which is right down the street from us. Southport Condo. Southport Condo is 88.69 units to the acre. Let me say that again. Eighty-eight point six-nine units to the acre. That's what was approved in approximately 1973. That building is 21 stories. And again, that's at a time when buildings were built about eight, you know, eight-foot ceilings. Today, when you build a product, a modern luxury product, you're looking at a minimum of 10, probably closer to 11 and 12-foot ceilings. Plus, you have FEMA, so you're talking about a very different standard when you start talking about height of the buildings. So that one is 88.89, I'm sorry, 6.9 units to the acre and 21 stories. La Ermitage. La Ermitage, it's 23 units to the acre, it's a big piece of land, but it's 300 feet in height. In fact, it's a little over 300 feet, but I'm going by the standards of today. So let's just call it 300 feet in height. It exceeds that slightly, but in fact, it's 27 stories. The View. The View is 51.8 units to the acre, and it's about 183, 83 feet high, 16 stories. The Oberge. Here we go. Oberge. Oberge sits at 240 feet. That's a newer, in the context of these products that I'm talking about. That was approved in 2016, 2017, and that, the higher building is at 240 feet. And not, but not, least, but, not, but, not last, but not least, excuse me, is The Palms. And The Palms is someone, a project that everybody likes to talk about because The Palms is kind of where things really started to change. So The Palms was approved in about 96, 97. It sits at 32 stories, at 300 feet. It's actually closer to like 350 feet, but we used what we could best calculate, so I'm just going to go with 300 out of fairness. And it's at 54 units to the acre. So at that point in time is when the city said, "You know what? Maybe this is not the height that we want here. Maybe we should look at this Central Beach section and kind of determine together." And they did this together with the city. It wasn't done in a vacuum. The city looked at it. This is what was originally done. So the timeline, in about 1989, the city adopted its comprehensive plan, and it looked at this section of what they consider to be Central Beach, and they said, "This is the area that we think is appropriate for the highest residential land use." It was specifically designated, you can see it, it's color-coded. On the left, it's in red, on the right is the zoning. Again, left is the land use map, on the right is the zoning map. And the city said, "This is the section of the beach that we think is appropriate for our highest density and highest height zoning category." So it was specifically designated to be that way. In fact, it says in the policy, "Include standards in the zoning ordinance for residential properties along major thoroughfares like A1A to encourage, to encourage the higher densities, which will in turn serve as a buffer between major roadways and low-density neighborhoods," which is exactly what happened here. And then in about 1997, just after The Palms, the city said, "You know what? We think maybe 300 was a little bit high, so let's all get together and figure out what we think the appropriate height and density is." And the whole area was downzoned. It was downzoned. It wasn't by accident. It was thoughtful planning principles that took the city to a place where they said, "We think 300 is too high, let's settle at 240." So they did. They said 240 is the appropriate height. They said 120 feet by right, 240, you just have to go through an extra level of review, which is Planning and Zoning Board, and you can ask for the 240 because we think it's totally appropriate for this area. So that's, in fact, what happened. And they actually took the density and they downzoned it. So whereas you had before 88, 89, 58 units per acre, that was no longer permitted. Anything east of the intercoastal is now 48 units to the acre. So that whole area was downzoned, and the city said, "We know we're taking away some rights from people that might be property owners, that are investors here, but we're going to settle on something that we think is fair and reasonable, and that's 240 feet height and 48 units to the acre. And that's what's before you this evening." So. My, will catch up to me? Okay. So the RMH 6D district is intended for high-rise, high-density, multifamily residences. As I said, if it's west of the intercoastal, it's 60 units to the acre and 300 feet. If it's east of the intercoastal, it's 240 feet and 48 units to the acre. It's completely consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the applicable zoning. So to listen to people, as I said, it sounds like this project's just getting dropped in the middle of a wasteland of single-family homes, but this is, in fact, what it actually looks like. We've taken an actual aerial of the actual street, looking north, you can see The Palms, you can see some of the other projects that I discussed, and you can see that we've dropped the Amalfi in. It looks pretty consistent to me. It looks pretty consistent with what you've already got sitting on A1A in the area that was specifically designated as an RMH 6D district. So what is the Amalfi? The Amalfi is, by all accounts, it's a small project from a density standpoint. It's only 39 units. That's extremely small when you look at it, especially in the context of the Whitey Grit, the Everglades, all the other buildings that it sits around. It's, as you know, it's by right up to 120 feet, 24 as a conditional use ask. It has a requirement of 84 parking spaces. It's actually overparked. This is, parking is something we talk a lot about at this board. A lot of times, we hear, "We just don't think there's enough parking." So this developer actually spent the money and the time to try to design a product that was overparked because it's a luxury product, and we know when you have a luxury product, people tend to have one or two cars, maybe more. And we wanted to make sure that not only for the residents, but also for any guests, that it has ample parking. So it's overparked. It has 104 parking spaces. We've done a full analysis of the water and sewer. It meets the capacity. Again, 39 units is a very small product by all accounts. And the daily trips, there's, I saw a lot of the emails that came through about, you know, all the traffic and, you know, how the traffic was going to be, how horrible it was going to be. This project actually only generates 8:00 AM peak hour trips and 10:00 PM peak hour trips. So it's a very, very small number of overall trips. And it's not in the Central Beach rack, so it doesn't pull from the pool, which is another discussion that you have a lot here at this board. So I went ahead and did a full analysis of this building versus some of the other buildings in the area, so we can really look at it in the context. And this is really important when you start talking about neighborhood compatibility, because we keep hearing, "This isn't compatible, it's not compatible." But this is what you actually look at when you determine compatibility. So the Whitey Grit, again, we're 39 units, and we're 240 feet. Whitey Grit, 85 units to the acre, 17 stories. Embassy Tower, 71 units to the acre, 19 stories. South Point, 88 units to the acre, 21 stories. Shore Club, 66 units to the acre, 17 stories. La Ermitage, 300 feet. Palms, 54 units to the acre, 300 feet. The View, 51 units to the acre. Sapphire, 48 units to the acre, and Oberge, 240 feet. That's the context. That's whether or not you're compatible with the buildings that surround you. So what are the existing conditions? I think we all know, you guys did site visits, you know. So what's there today is Airbnbs. I think, I'm going to say that Gareth has done the best he can do with what he, when he purchased the properties. He invested in them, he cleaned them up as much as he possibly could, and he runs them as respectable Airbnbs, but Airbnbs are what they are. It's not something I think that anybody really can say they think is a desirable use. Not only that, there's already 16 units here, so the spread between 16 units and 39, even smaller than if you just look at it as a standalone, new 39 units. And this is all backout parking. It's parking that backs out directly onto A1A, which causes conflict not only with pedestrians, but certainly with cars and with traffic. So it's obviously not a desirable use for what's there today. So there are two requests that are before you today. So the site plan has two things that it's asking for, two reasons that it's here and that the Planning and Zoning Board has to make these determinations. One is yard modifications, and obviously, the other is conditional use for building height. So I'm going to take a minute and talk about the yard modifications. I know you consider these a lot. This is something I, I've had discussions with the city, I've had discussions with you, certainly with some of the elected officials, about this bizarre section of the code that says yard modifications have to be half the height of the building. So I'm going to show you what that looks like. But in this case, this actually, this project actually has really generous yards, far more generous, honestly, than other projects that I've had the honor of representing, and probably far more generous than what you've seen be requested. So on this side, on the front side facing A1A, it's asking for a yard modification of 25 to 25 feet. On the south side, it's asking for a yard modification to 69 feet, so it's almost got 69 feet from the property line to the first part of the building. On the north side, it's 31 feet, and on the rear, it's 20 feet. This is what half the height of the building looks like. This is why this section of the code just honestly needs to be rewritten, because every time we have a discussion with neighborhoods, the neighborhoods always say, "Just come in with a by-right product. If you, if you show us something that's by-right, we'll support you." This is what a by-right product looks like. Obviously, it's ludicrous, obviously, it's not possible, obviously, it creates a situation where you have a lot that just simply is not buildable under today's standards. And I think that's a really important image to share, because I don't know that, you know, if you're not, if you're not an architect, I don't know that you can see that in your head. And it took, I think, creating a massing study to see what half the height of the building setback would actually look like. And this is what this building actually looks like in plan view, and you can see, I've already gone through what the yard modifications are, but you can see they're really quite generous. And on the ground level, this is what those yard modifications look like. Again, 69 feet, because what we've done is we've taken all that traffic off of A1A, where it now stacks up, where you've got cars backing out and causing conflict with the cars. We've taken all that traffic, and we've said, "You know what? Let's just bring it into the site. Let's create a service drive where we actually have, if, you know, if residents are moving in and they've got, you know, they've got delivery trucks, you've got box trucks, Amazon trucks, mail trucks, garbage trucks, whatever it is, it all happens on the site. It doesn't happen in the roadway the way it does today." And you've also got a very large port of cachet, and you've got the ability for cars to actually come in off the street. So there's a lot of room on the site, which allows for, allows for a significant improvement in the area. So I want to talk just a little bit about design evolution. So you all have heard, there was a, there was a prior version that we were looking at, and Kobe Karp, our architect, is here, he's going to talk a little bit more and really talk you through the design. But I want to share this because I think this is really important for this discussion. On the right-hand side, in dark red, you see, that's the Everglades. The Everglades is our most affected building. That is the only building that is actually in our actual, that's on our block, that's right behind us, and it is the building that is most affected by the development of this possible project. So in the original, and we've shown it to you in light red above the dark red, what the original proposal would have done to Everglades. So we did not come to this by accident. We came to this evolution of design through discussions with our most affected neighbor, which is, "What can we do to improve your view corridor? What can we do to improve you and your situation?" Because we recognize that we're going to have an impact on you, and we would like to be good neighbors to the people that are most affected, and that's the building behind us. So that's, you can see that, and that's why we created this image, because we felt that was important for you to understand. So I'm going to try not to bore you, but I do think it's important to go through the criteria for yard modification, and I want to just read those aloud. I'm not going to read you everything, because you can certainly read. But, but these are the criteria for yard modifications. And number one says, "By adjusting the location of the structure on the site, an architectural and/or engineering study can graphically prove that a superior site development as relates to shadows will, shadows will result from the adjustment." Obviously, we redesigned it to move the building away from the, from the property lines and to create a better situation for our direct neighbors. Number two, "By adjusting the location of the structure on the site when the site abuts the intercoastal waterway or other permanent public open space," neither of which this project does, "land or water, it is, it is found that allowing a reduction is compatible with adjacent properties." Obviously, these yard modifications are very, very large. They're not, we're not asking for 15 feet on the sides. These are very large yards as designed, so it obviously complies with that section. Number three, oops, is that the, yes, excuse me. "There's continuity of yards between the proposed development and adjacent properties." Same, that's the same analysis that we just went through with the very, very wide yard modifications. And continuity of architecture, this is a beautifully designed building. It is, they have spared no expense with the quality of material, the quality of the design. It's a very expensive building to build, especially when you, when you consider the fact that they pushed the podium almost completely out of the way of the Everglades to preserve those view corridors. And, again, continuity of architecture, so that's, that's another important discussion. And, let me just, I'm just going to jump. And continuity of urban scale of adjacent properties. So these are the adjacent properties, obviously. All right. So let's talk about building height request. And let me just spend a minute, oops, talking about building height, because that seems to be really what everybody wants to talk about. So what, what is the criteria that we have to meet to increase the building height to 240, which, again, was already downzoned from the 300? So the RMH 6D zoning district serves, serves as a transition area between higher intensity development along major corridors and the adjacent lower-density residential neighborhoods. In this case, we're not adjacent to residential neighborhoods, we're adjacent to multifamily on the west and A1A on the east. It goes on to say that, "In accordance with the neighborhood compatibility criteria, the 39-unit residential development is not expected to create significant levels of noise, odor, or other adverse impacts on adjacent properties." That's the neighborhood compatibility. Is it noisy? Does it create odor? The proposed development, mass and scale and height are The proposed development, mass and scale and height are consistent with the existing high-rise residential buildings within the RMH zoning district, which I showed you is the corridor that we sit in. So what is neighborhood compatibility? It's not, here we go. Compatibility is how does the proposed project fit within the framework of the adopted zoning and comprehensive plan, together with the potentials on the site? It's not, am I taller than what's there today? It's, do I fit within the framework of the comprehensive plan and the zoning? That's what neighborhood compatibility is. I think it's misused a lot, because people make an assumption that if there's a three-story building next to me, that I can't be 150 feet in height, and then, because then that's not compatible. But that's not what neighborhood compatibility speaks to. It's not what's there today. It's what is it zoned and land used for? And I think, I think we've, we've established that. So, so, and when the city does a neighborhood compatibility analysis, they, they don't define, you know, a specific area, but they do look at the, at the neighborhood association, and this project is in the Central Beach Alliance. And the Central Beach Alliance, as we'll talk about later, did support this project. So the conditional use standards for height are access, traffic generation, and road capacities. We've already reviewed all that. We've actually improved the situation of, of what's there today. As I said, this has very low traffic impact, because it's a very small number of units, and it's actually a very, very small increase over what's, over the 16 units that sit there today. It also looks at, the location or use of the structure is not in conflict with the city's comprehensive plan. It's not. Off-site or onsite conditions exist, which will reduce any impact of permitting the use or structure. Check. On-site improvements have been incorporated into the site plan, which minimize adverse impacts as a result of permitting the use or structure. Obviously, by taking all of that backout traffic off of A1A, by, by creating a service drive on the property, by minimizing the impacts, by being able to take cars coming off the site and all the deliveries coming, coming out of the right, the right-of-way, that's a huge improvement over what's there. The location of the use and proximity to a similar use does not impact the character of the zoning district in which the use is located. Again, the zoning district. And there are no adverse impacts of the use, which affect the health, safety, safety and welfare of adjacent properties. The use is residential, so obviously, it does not impact the use. It's going from, it's actually an improvement. It's going from Airbnb's to a very high-end luxury residential project. I'm going to ask Koby Karp to come up and take it from here and talk through the, the architecture. And we've got some, some shadow images as well that we will share, and then I'll come back up and close.
How do I play this?
Thank you, Koby. You just hit.
Just hit that?
Yeah.
Wow, look at that.
And you can, you can go page by page.
So number one, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for your time and for your service being here. I'll try to be brief. My name is Koby Karp. I am the architect for the project with Matthew Picard in the back. He's actually the one who does all the work. I'm just a hood ornament. But really, this is an opportunity that, we have a client that not only requested us to take the parking that normally is in a podium nearby and bury it in a basement, which then creates a nicer footprint in context. And here you can see basically that the context of the building, because it becomes skinnier in a footprint, it basically starts to take up half the site. When you look at the drop-off area, there's a big green space where people drop off, and the footprint is quite petite. And that allows us to do three things. As the sun rises in the east and sets in the west along a southern axis, our next-door neighbors actually have their pool immediately on the south side. So it allowed us to push the building back, not only to create more light and air and let the neighbors to the west. Come on in, there's a chair right over here. Go ahead, please. Age before beauty. So what happens here is that you have an opportunity to really create a better solution and a better building. So this developer, and, and it was quite amazing, allowed us to bury the parking below grade and create a bigger green space all the way around. The last one we did was like the Four Seasons down the street. And it really created an opportunity to have more open space, more green space. The parking is below grade, which then allowed us to have, and you can see the site plan on the bottom right-hand page side of the screen there. The whole drop-off area is landscaping in the front. So we have great landscaping, not only in the front, but also all the way around in the street, so people can walk around the property, around the street, and enjoy the pedestrian movement, because the parking is all buried below grade. By being able to cut the footprint essentially in half, it really created an opportunity to let more light and air for the, for that whole corner, including the adjacent building to the west. Now, what happens here is that if you look, go back to the section that Stephanie showed you right here, there is an image, and it shows you how it is, ah, this is a good image. This is the walk along A1A. So you have trees along the street, so it gives you privacy and shade away from the cars. You are walking on a broad sidewalk, and then you have landscaping on the right. That is critical to see, because what happens is that, right now, at any given time, the Airbnb can just back out and run over you. This image, just as an FYI, you can see where the light goes to gray-black on the upper right-hand side, that is the additional height. The other heights are the open space that I'm giving. So instead of being broad-sided to you, I'm giving you the skinny side. And by being able to give you that skinny side, it is the most critical, because what you can see here on this, on this green landscape plan, we have a nice green tropical walk along A1A, coming wrapping the corner. You can see where the piazza drop-off is, and it pushes the lobby basically to the 50-yard line of the site. And also what we did is, you can see on top of the page, we created a drive that is taking you all the way around the property. So all the drop-off, if you have an Uber, or if you have somebody dropping off your food, all of that gets off and separated. So this developer really created an opportunity for us that I have, you know, not had the pleasure of being involved with in the past. A basement parking, big green space at the ground level, a very nice small footprint at the ground level, and really creating what we see as villas in the sky. It's really villas stacked one on top of each other as a very nice luxury product that we desire to do here. And the important thing, the really important thing, when you look in context of this neighborhood, because we have the pleasure of working on some homes here on the beach, is that you have an opportunity to really create a product that is unique and special with only minimal amount, quantity of apartments. And here you can see the setback, you can see the existing building on the left. It really creates an opportunity that, you know, I, I hate to say it, but they really gave me a great opportunity here to, to play. You can see here the view corridors. Look at the vistas and the open vistas and the open space. The shade, the shade and shadows, the sun rises in the east and sets in the west along a southern axis, are, are, again, our shadow line is as skinny as can be, because we're giving, again, the skinny side facing south. Having said that, this is the walk along the street shaded by the landscape trees. This is the front. You can see how back we pushed it. And the pool of the neighbors to the west is right there on the left-hand side. So really created to leave a nice open space. This is the drop-off experience, looking back to the ocean, to the east, Obert to the right. And this is the drop-off. And you can see that the experience really that we are seeking to do here is a very luxurious product. The team that is involved in this project is really phenomenal. They're all a bunch of local folks here. And with that, I'll stop. Is that okay? Did I miss anything? Okay, fine.
Thank you. So I just want to take a minute and close and talk about our, our neighborhood outreach. I'd heard that, I'd heard some things that I, I was, have to admit, I was a little shocked that we, we hadn't met with neighborhoods, that we hadn't reached out to the neighborhoods. I, I just, I, I, that's just not a true statement. So I, I created this timeline of the, of the meetings that we had, and I'm just, I gotta, I can't read that far away, so I have to get to my page here, I apologize. So we started this, obviously, you know, we started in February of 2024 was our first CBA board meeting. By the time you get to CBA, you're, you're pretty far in the process. I mean, that's, you know, you, you get, you go to, you start your DRC, you do your community meetings and whatnot. So we started in February 2024 with CBA. We went to CBA twice in February. We went to the White Egrith condo. We did, I believe that one was on Zoom, but we met with a, a large number of people at White Egrith. We went to, again, back to CBA, White Egrith, and Lauderdale Beach. We made an in-person presentation. Then we went to the Everglades Condo Association. Then we had DRC. Then in May, we had a CBA, another CBA meeting. Then we went back to Lauderdale Beach HOA and made a meeting, did a presentation. On June 10th, we went to the Everglades Club Condo Meeting Presentation. On June 19th, we went back to CBA again, and the CBA voted in support of this project. And I want to say that again. The CBA is our neighborhood association. We're not in the other neighborhoods. We're in the Central Beach Alliance, and the CBA voted in support of this plan. And they wrote a letter to that effect, and I know that was delivered to you. Then we, we did a Dolphin Isles presentation, and I need to talk about that for a minute, because we went to an in-person presentation. I've never seen a vote, I've never seen a meeting where the vote is not taken that on the spot. So we made a presentation. I knew some of the people in the room. I had good conversations with them. I had good feedback. I'm not suggesting that people were, and I know some of them are here, I'm not suggesting they were in favor of the project. But what I find frustrating is that we didn't get the results of that meeting for quite some time after. So I'm not even sure who voted, because the vote wasn't taken at the evening that we were there. And that's not a usual voting procedure. Usually you make a presentation, the people that actually listened to the presentation, that had an opportunity to hear your case, to hear the presentation, to show you the product, those are the people that vote. I don't know who voted, because I can't, I don't know if they were there. I think the vote was taken about a week later and maybe online. But I, I just, I, I was surprised by that, and I, I just need to, to, to bring that up. I think, as I said, I just want to, as I want to show you again, the Central Beach Alliance slide, I never know what I'm pointing at, so I apologize. So again, we're in the Central Beach Alliance. The Central Beach Alliance voted 224 people in support and 171 against. What's important about that vote is that people that are in Dolphin Isles took a vote as part of the CBA and voted no. And then they took a separate vote as part of the Dolphin Isles and again voted no. And I'm not sure if that happened at Lauderdale Beach. I don't, I don't know if it did, but I, but I'm fairly certain, because I know some people that did, that voted in Dolphin Isles and then also voted in CBA. So I think, I think when you're looking at the neighborhood support, you've got to look at our affected neighborhood, which is Central Beach Alliance. Also, the Everglades. And I, to me, this is very important, and I've heard some, some kind of not-nice things said about Everglades, that they're, they're in a condo, or they're in an apartment, so maybe they're not as important as some of the single-family homes. I would venture to say it is our most affected neighbor. It is the neighbor that from day one, we said, we know we have to work with Everglades, because we get it. We get it. Nobody wants a building built in front of them. I'm sure they would prefer us just to go away, but we worked very hard to get to a place with Everglades where we could reach a solution that worked for the neighbor, the neighbor that is actually affected by this project. And I'm very proud to say that we did. I'm, I have to credit my client and the whole team on my side, and I really also have to credit the attorney who was going to speak to you, Ellen Bogdanoff, who represents the Everglades. We really worked together to find a solution that worked for these actual neighbors. So I, I want to say thank you to them. And, and then, you know, last but not least, I know you received, I know you received, we counted, we counted them. I don't have the exact numbers, and I'm going to just, I'm, I'm going to give you just my, my best guess, but I think you probably received somewhere in the neighborhood of about, actually, how many? No, there were more than that. I want to say, let, let's just, let me be generous. I think there were at least 45 emails opposing the project that were a form email. I, I got a copy of every single one, so I got them too, because that's, that's how the process works. They're public records, so I get to see them too. They were form emails. Some of them said things like, you're shading the intercoastal, you're shading the beach. We showed you the shade studies. We're not, which says to me that maybe they're not looking at the right project, or maybe they were just asked to sign a form letter. We submitted today, and I know you got it, because I asked the staff to send it to you, over 80 letters of support. 80 letters of individual support. This team, the team of developer, they went out and they knocked on doors, and they said, can we show you this project? Can we ask you if you like this project? We'd like to ask you to please, like to ask you to please sign, if you're willing to, would you be willing to sign a letter of support? Over 80 of them. Far more than what you're going to hear from the side of people that are opposed, that we think actually looked at the project and were willing to have a conversation with us. So we were very proud to be able to support those letters. They've been submitted for the record. Some of them, you might, you know, you might recognize some of the, some of the entities that wrote them, but we're, we're very proud, and they're, they're, they're all Fort Lauderdale residents, and I, and they're all predominantly members of the Central Beach Alliance. So with that, I, I would like to reserve just a few minutes for rebuttal, but I want to thank you for your consideration this evening. We worked very hard to get here. We thank you for your, your thoughtfulness in listening to this presentation. I know it wasn't short, but I feel like there were a lot of really important points that we had to make, and my whole team is here to answer any questions. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we'll move on to hearing from the, from the public. I will read out the different names of the people who have requested to speak. Again, three minutes for individuals, five minutes for presidents of associations. I'm going to start the clock. There's a little timer that you can see maybe from the podium. If I kind of wave or something, you may not, you know, the alarm's not very loud, so if I wave, that's all I'm saying, is that your time is up, and if you'd please wrap up. And newer information is always better, helps us have a broader understanding. So with that, I have someone. Did you want to speak first? Okay, I just wasn't sure. Okay, so we have Mr. Mike McDonald. Is Mike here? There he is. And I believe the next person is, help me with that last name. It looks like TJ. Verderling? Verderling? He'll come up and queue up. Okay. Mr. McDonald, the floor is yours. About three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Mike McDonald. I am one of the owners of Cast Construction, and I'm here in support of the project for more development. Our address is 701 North Point Parkway, West Palm Beach, Florida. And I know what everybody just said. Of course he's here in support of the project. It's Cast Construction. But let me tell you, we find it to be our responsibility to improve neighborhoods and bring improvement, new codes, big, beautiful buildings to your community. And speaking aside from my business interest in working with the Moore Group and bringing it to you, is that's the same thing I would want for my community. And where I live, West Palm, and I have a couple of my partners and team members here that live in the city of Fort Lauderdale, we build across the state, but it's very important for us to deliver new code-compliant buildings, improvement in infrastructure, and, and economic growth to the communities that you live in. That's our responsibility, and we do it with the least impact possible and least interruption to your daily lives. More development. Ms. Toothacre did a fabulous job. Koby Karp did a fabulous job presenting the design to you. It's a gorgeous building. It's going to improve the neighborhood, and it's a very minimal impact for a short period of time to have decades and decades of, of new development to your community. So I ask you to consider that as, as, as unusually, like, this, this is not unusual to have a lot of community opposition. We've been to plenty of these meetings, and, and we empathize with the residents. And that's why we're a very responsible contractor, bring you the, the highest level of quality and address issues daily. If there's daily issues that come up, we address them daily and we rectify them. Now, the, 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 the design actually improves infrastructure, and it, and it controls stormwater management, and it improves the parking and the traffic conditions. They, they exist now. So I urge you to, to kind of consider those things and, and vote in favor of the project. So thank you very much.
Thank you. TJ. And on deck is Audrey Kaminski.
How's everybody doing?
Name, address, and if you've been sworn in, please.
Yep. My name's CJ Verdioli. I live at 201 Hendrix Isle over in Fort Lauderdale. All right.[1768.02] All right. And then, yeah, I was here for the swearing. I apologize about the hat. It was a rough day, so. I'm just coming up, because I just want to start saying, I, I've either driven, biked, or ran by that site for a good part of the last decade. Very familiar with it. I think that it's always been a site that, or a portion of, I should say, of A1A, where it was pleasant to start seeing the, the welcoming of development take place there over the last several years, I guess. You know, although I'm not immediately affected by the development of this project negatively, it certainly caught my eye as a very healthy step forward for the local market on A1A. Fort Lauderdale certainly needs high-quality, high-quality, sustainable development. Not only the mega-structures that we start to see all over the place with hundreds of units that are completely, you know, kind of just exacerbating the market, and, you know, money grabs at the end of the day. You know, compile that with the fact that the current site has a reverse parking setup on A1A, of all places where I myself have come close to multiple accidents. I just can't see how the removal of 20 or 30 short-term rentals in a frankly well-thought-out and beautifully-designed project with minimal density can really be seen as something that's a negative to the area. I personally welcome the project, and I think the city will even end up using this project as an example to future developers, frankly not to be a bit overbearing in their reach as far as density goes, and certainly take into account a more design-friendly approach. I mean, I can tell you just from my own background in construction, a cantilevered design like a building like this, in particular, design as, as an overall project, I applaud the developer, quite frankly, as a, they seem to be the first that I've come across down in South Florida at least, that seems to be putting more aesthetics over profits in this situation. And I think it's a breath of fresh air, and like I said, I think that it's going to serve as a, a bit of a marker for, you know, future developers to come and play, and you guys to really point to this project, saying, you know, this is sustainable, this is something that's brought in the right way, and wasn't something that was, you know, kind of just jammed down everybody's throats. So, like I said, I'm in support of the project. I think that, you know, hopefully when it's done being built, if you guys approve this thing, I'm looking forward to, you know, the morning coffee runs, driving past there, and everything else. I think it's going to change that entirety of A1A. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kaminski. And on deck is Esther Schubin.
Hi, I'm Audrey Kaminski, and I live at the Everglades Club. I've been there almost 25 years now, so I'm directly to the west of where the Amalfi's going to be. At the beginning, I was very upset, to say the least, but I've, once I got a chance to meet Gareth and Stephanie and their team, they were very willing to listen to, I'm actually on a committee, the Everglades Club Amalfi Committee, and at the time, I was also on our board. So, they listened to pretty much everything. I walked the grounds with them. That's kind of when the building changed, because everyone was blocked, and now some of us are blocked. I'm one of the people that's still blocked. But I knew that a building was going to get built regardless, and they were very willing to work with us. And so, that was back in April '24. I'm going to kind of jump ahead to this past CBA meeting in May of '25, and I had some concerns, and I raised them at their, because I had heard that there was a building built next to, I guess, Publix, that I guess they had won the battle, but lost the war, and now I guess there's some multi-use, or I don't know if it's a hotel or something's going up there. And I was very, very concerned about the transient. So, I asked, could we get a deed restriction on the unit, so no short-term rentals, and just only residential, no mixed use? And they agreed to that on the spot. So, they've been very easily, easy to work with. Prohibit public parking, kind of because right across the street is, I think the little hotel is called, but it, what is it called? Cambria, thank you. Every time I walk across the street with my dog, I'm like dodging Ubers. So, it's, they just whip around. So, anyways, they're, like they were saying, there's going to be no public parking, because I know that Cambria charges, you know, they'll put signs out there for special events, like the airshow. They're going to work with us on putting a privacy fence and stuff, and retaining wall. So, I am now in favor of them. And so is our, our building, so I hope represent that. Thank you.
There's a question for you, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. So, the building will block your view, but you still support it.
Just me, because I'm on the third floor, I'm blocking anyways.
But am I correct?
Yes.
Blocks your view, but you're supporting it.
Yeah, I don't have a view anyways, so it doesn't really affect me.
No problem.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
How many units are in the, in your building?
Sorry, I thought you were done. I had, I only have my three minutes. There are 44 units in my building, and actually, to another point, where now it's, like they were saying, it's Airbnb or whatever, I almost got hit by somebody flying, literally coming around, I was making the right turn to go into my building from A1A, and somebody came flying around through the red light and right into that little, on the corner there, where they were staying.
Thank you.
It scared me. I mean, like.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Esther, Ms. Esther Schubin, I believe? Yes, ma'am? And on deck is Virginia Heb.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm the president of the Everglades Club Condominium Association, and I'm happy to report that we fully support the Amalfi. This, we are the most affected. We have talked about this very much. I lived in this building for 20 years. I will no longer have the ocean view, but I will look at this work of art. It was conceived, you have seen it, that it starts only to blend out our building on the one side, on the other side, once it has surpassed our height. So, that was very well done, because we still have sun from one side, the other side. Audrey, who lives in the one stack, will still have sun. The five and six have, I live in O2 and O3, so we'll be blocked, but we can also go to the ocean, because we live very, very close there. And I think the, the building is beautiful, and we have very well worked with Gareth and Stephanie Toothacre, and I think we will have a very good working relationship while we are building it. And we, we are 46 years old, our building, or 40, 40 years old. So, we are of course concerned that we might crumble, but we got assurances from them that they will support us in its seismic monitoring and inspections before and after, so we feel safe, and we look forward to working with you. And I'm happy that the building will hopefully be built, because it's really avant-garde. Thank you.
I believe we have a question. Mr. Buckley? Sorry.
No, no, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Yeah. So, I kind of do consider you guys to be the most affected.
Yes.
You know, residents over there. What is the current state of, of what's there currently? Like, what's, tell me like a day-to-day of what, what goes on there? Is it a pleasant experience now, being the short-term rental? Is it all?
Well, look, we, we can look over that property down on the, far down, because it's very one-story buildings.
Like the traffic backing out on the A1A?
Oh, yeah. That truly is an, is a funny solution, to be able to back out on a busy street. I don't know whoever came up with that concept, but the, the solution, which they are suggesting that it goes, I don't know, you call that a pathway there and come out front, and the people don't park there anymore, that's a wonderful solution, and really no danger for the people, because this backing up, I can see from my building that people have, there's also a street light, so people, when they see it's green, they accelerate, and the other people want to get out, backing out, right? So, because you come in, it's, it's a bad situation. So, this will really ameliorate that traffic problem.
Okay. Mr. Buckley, did you have a question?
Not specifically of you, thank you.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Please, Mr. Del Torres.
Yes. Hi, I'm Hector Del Torrez. A question for you. You're the president of the association, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you feel that you represent the majority or the minority of your constituents?
Well, I can confess that we had a lot of discussions, and that a lot of people, although they are snowbirds and don't, don't live there full-time, are upset. Well, yeah, you have to go to the beach then yourself, if you can't see it, right? But the, the thing is for us, as the developer has been working for us, and we, we have advantages from them helping us to stay stable, I think that outweighs far the antagonism. The, we did vote, we had some people who were, let me say, unreasonable, aggressive against, but we came to the conclusion that it's to, to our benefit, and because it's not, I mean, the, the quality of life, I don't know whether it's so much impacted, just because you have a beautiful building in front of you.
So, so in that vote?
So, we had a vote.
In that vote, what, how much, how much was the vote? Two favor and non-favor? What, what do those numbers look like?
As not all people were on the, on the call, I can't tell you. In, on the board, it was five against, four against one. Or one was against, and four were for the building.
Those were board members voting, correct?
Yes. We have four board members and five, sorry, I can't do math. Five board members and four voted yes, one was not too sure and voted no.
Does the association, are, are you aware of the 20-foot separation between yourself and the building?
Yes, yeah, we are more than aware. We are more than aware, and, and we, we even think our retaining wall will crumble, because our building is so old. But we have help, so it will, it will not be catastrophic.
So, you have a 20-foot separation between yourself and the building, your, your views are blocked, the other people's views are blocked, four-to-one vote, and you're still in favor of the project, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Somebody's phone is ringing. Mr. Gannon? Not my phone. Somebody? Okay.
I thought I silenced it.
No wonder, it's still ringing, thank you. Did, did, did the Everglades Board negotiate a settlement of some sorts, or money from the developer?
Yeah, we have an agreement with, with Amalfi that we can not go under, to say so. Yeah.
Mr. Spence, do you have a question?
I think I can get the answer.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Yes, we have a letter of agreement with the developer that we, that will help us to stay stable during the construction. They will do dust mitigation and so forth, structural inspection, and we also get some of money to improve our aesthetics. We don't want to look like the riffraff.
Mr. Spence, do you have a question?
Yes. So, for the residents that would be directly affected by the construction of this building, was it also?
I apologize. Start again, I didn't hear the second word.
For the residents who, who will be affected by the construction of this project, if it were to go through, was it ever discussed about anything towards possible complications due to the construction of this building? Maybe sound, maybe light?
Well.
I don't know the word, but any like bothering from, maybe like light during construction at night, or from sound during construction during the day or night? Has it ever been discussed how this would affect the residents of your building?
Yes, we have discussed that. Our building is not in all, at all times fully occupied, so it's mostly the two of you living there all year round, which also includes me and Audrey. We will be impacted, probably also people work from home, as Audrey, it will be a little bit tough. But you can't construct without noise, right? So, I mean, that is inevitable, but then we have assurance that the times of construction are to city code, and we will live with it, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The speaker? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Buckley, you have a question?
There's one thing, I just was slipping through the 50 or so letters of opposition. A lot of them contain the same statement, and I'd like to get some clarification perhaps from the applicant. They talk about 500 trips a day. I read the traffic study, and the traffic study says 107 trips a day, and it didn't take into account the existing trips. You would have subtracted the existing trips from the existing building. So, I, I'm, it, it says the same thing over and over and over again in about 40 of these letters, about, about 500 trips. So, if we could get a clarification of that before we have people coming up here and, and saying that?
Yes, thank you.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So, so you're correct, that it's not 500 trips a day. I'm not the, I'm not the traffic engineer. Actually, can I, Blake, can I ask you to come, I'm going to ask Blake to come up and join me, because he, he's, Blake's the civil engineer on the project, but he spoke actually today with our traffic engineer and has more up-to-date information. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I, I was not sworn in, so.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're going to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, the, to, to answer the 500-trip comment, there was a recent change, and I'm also not a traffic engineer, just to preface, I'm just a civil engineer, but the ITE changed their, how they generate the trips for high residential buildings recently. So, previously, when we started the project, the trip generation was 500 trips. Now, it's only 100 trips, and the existing uses were not taken into consideration, because they haven't been fully occupied, but they are being used as an Airbnb, and those existing uses approximately generate 200 trips based on the low-density. So, technically, it's a, it's a reduction in trips, if you account for the existing uses being fully occupied.
For the record, can you tell us what the abbreviation ITE stands for?
Um.
Is that the Institute of Transportation Engineers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. That it, Mr. Buckley?
And they, and the, the total daily trips now is 102.
Thank you for the clarification. I just, I'm looking through here, and basically, it's the same sentence in each one of these letters, and it didn't match up with the presentation we received from staff. Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me, one second, sir. If Mr. Gannon has something to say. How quickly? We on the board always have trouble trying to figure out how, how trips are arrived at, and, and it is for you, Ken, Ken, Kevin. And it looks like, it looks like the, the trip calculations have always been cryptic to us. It's hard to nail down what they come from, how it works, how they come over this, and now it's even got more cryptic with this new update that just happened recently, it sounds like. So, just a comment.
Okay.
Okay, so not a question, you just wanted to let that be known? Okay, thank you. Ms. Virginia Heb?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And up next is Mel Lynette.
So, if there are other members of the public that are going to speak, I'll swear you in at this time as well, if you want to stand and be sworn.
I already did swear in.
Oh, you already did?
Yep.
Okay. Just state that for the record and continue.
Okay. One of the things that I wanted to bring up was that I moved there in 1997. That was a very different neighborhood. The pictures were a little bit deceptive in terms of the size and the scale of things. And Ireland's Inn was Ireland's Inn, a two-to-four-story building. I don't, I represent myself.
Can you please state?
I'm part of the Lauderdale Beach neighborhood. Okay. Yep, on center, on the other side of the street.
If, you'll please state your name, address, and you have been sworn in.
Sure.
So, just those two, thank you.
I have been sworn in. Virginia Heb, 316 Center Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33308.
Thank you.
For, since 1997. So, I've been there for a while, seen a lot of change, a lot of traffic, which is a, very much a concern, being an animal lover and owner, as well as the safety. So, we have the Ireland's Inn, which was one small place, which is now the Oberge. We have Sea Tower, which is a historic site and will remain there, with a limited number of units in terms of density. And the Hermitage, which was brought up, was a four-story hotel when I bought my home. It's much bigger now. But they did close off the end of the neighborhood and made some improvements in terms of a park and things like that. So, that was very good. The heights in the past, a mistake from the past of approving a building that's too tall should not predict the future. I'll just say, the height of the past should not predict what we allow going forward. And what I see, when I see another building with a number of units, is more Airbnbs. I do have the one directly behind me, somewhat under control, thank God, because during COVID, they partied 24/7 for a week and a half. But I did get the property manager's wife and the property manager's permission to call anytime, and I do. So, the traffic is one of my main concerns. We have just gotten the Publix. We do have the larger buildings. And safety. During construction and improvements to my home, my 1947 fixer-upper, there were two cars stolen in Pompano and dumped in the neighborhood. One of the reasons that the Neighborhood Association formed was to protect the neighbors. And we hire off-duty police officers to patrol our neighborhood because then they can also make an arrest if they need to. So we take security and safety and traffic very seriously. And those are my concerns with this project, or with any future projects. The other concern is from an earth standpoint, the coral that we're all built on. Right now, the coral allows the water to come in and dissipate quickly, and I am 20 feet above sea level at the moment. I worry that more big projects will crush that because coral is delicate and it's struggling in general. I'm not a scientist. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope, sitting down. Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Up now is Ms. Ellen Bogdanoff, and on deck is Ann Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. I'm Ellen Bogdanoff, 1 East Broward Boulevard. I represent the Everglades. And just to kind of answer a few of the questions that you all had, which were legitimate questions, is they put together a committee, the Everglades, because obviously they were extremely concerned, and they put down their wish list of things of, you know, what they would like to see happen on the site while they are under construction. And, you know, to their credit, and I have to thank them very much, Mr. Moore, Stephanie Toothaker, and their entire team, they accepted every single one of them, and they were legitimate concerns. It's dust mitigation. What's going to happen? Will they destroy the retaining wall? What's going to happen to their pool since it was mentioned that it's like butt-up against the property? You know, the dust, everything that goes on with construction, because we've all been through it, we have all lived next door to something that's going on. They have been extremely generous, open. The board decided that it was in their best interest to move forward to try to negotiate a settlement, and it happened, and we signed a letter. I have a letter here that I'd like to submit for the record from the board. It was kind of difficult to tell. I was on a lot of meetings, a lot of calls with some of the residents, and it was kind of hard to tell how many there were that were for and against, because there were comments, but nobody really had anything. Everything that they said they had concerns with was taken care of in the agreement. So, we believe that we're going to go forward, and it's going to be a great relationship. I think Mr. Moore was very generous. He's going to give us, he's in constant contact with the president, plus they have a superintendent on site. They're going to repair anything that may or may not happen on the site on, you know, in a timely basis. So they're going to have their property protected, and they're very, we're pleased that we had the opportunity to do this quickly and efficiently, and thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ann Ralston, and on deck is Catherine Uden.
Good evening, thank you. I live in, my name is Ann Ralston. I'm 326 South 14th Avenue in Hollywood, Florida. My concern from Jacksonville all the way down to Golden Beach is these are barrier islands. You keep building on them, I think a lady that spoke before me, they're going to sink eventually. There was an article in the New York Times about New York City sinking. Nothing was brought up about the environment, sea level rise, king tides, and flooding. Infrastructure is a big part all the way down, and the more you keep building and taking away green space, the less place the water has to go. So I didn't hear any of that. If a building has to go there, there are height restrictions, most cities have them. They need to follow them, or why have them? So if a building must get built, then what's wrong with your 16 stories or 12 stories or whatever your height restriction is in Fort Lauderdale? I think all coastal cities are seeming to have this issue. I prefer no building whatsoever on any barrier island. I think they're already all built out. Flagler Beach is an excellent example of no high rises on their barrier island at all. They made one mistake, let one building go up. There were supposed to be four. They cut the three others out. So, no building on east of A1A to preserve your beach area and things like that. So, even though this project itself does not affect me, it does affect the barrier islands all the way up and down the coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Catherine Uden, and on deck is John Spear. Thank you, sir.
I have the same concerns as some of the previous speakers. I think when you're talking about the beach and the barrier islands, the reason why you get so many people out and so many letters, because the beach belongs to everyone. So it doesn't just directly affect, you know, the people that live next door, that civic association, it affects everyone. I have the same issue, and I actually live in Hollywood. When it's a project that affects the beach that is out of scale, everybody turns out. It's the most contested item because it affects everyone. The beach is for everyone. So I do think this project is close to the beach. I think I heard that it was mentioned that it's not. It's very close to the beach. When you see all those buildings, I agree with, don't let the mistakes of the past dictate the future. You can build a very beautiful building and a profitable project and stick within the heights. When a developer uses surrounding buildings to justify the height of their building, if they're searching for other buildings, to say, "Well, this one's tall, this one's tall." To me, that's even more reason to keep it as low as possible, because every single project, every hearing that I've been to, the developers use other buildings to justify theirs. So keep it low, because we always pay for those mistakes later. We are paying for those mistakes with the Live Local Act, when developers are allowed to say, "Within a mile, look at this building. Look how tall this one is." So we're paying for those mistakes now, and let's not keep making those mistakes. Keep it as low as you can. They can still build something beautiful and still make a profit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Spear, and on deck, I believe, is Stephen Nagy.
Hi, John Spear, 2417 North Atlantic Boulevard, Lauderdale Beach Homeowners Association. It is a good-looking building. I wish I were in turn, and I was all versed on this, and I had 10 minutes, but I have three. It's too tall, and I really do take some hurt. It's like, oh, it's Central Beach Alliance. I live in Lauderdale Beach. I know people in Dolphin Isles. We associate it pretty much as single-family housing. And yes, those picture-tall buildings, most of them face the beach. Palm's ugliest thing in the world, don't compare yourself to that. Hermitage, further down. What's really close by in recent are the fountains, very beautiful, low-scale. Cambria Hotel, they could have gone big, low, fit in the neighborhood. The newest is Oberge. They took a nod to our neighborhood, and the building closest to us, they actually did a beautiful slope to make it okay. But also, that's ocean-facing. It's very different than on A1A. And my big fear is, you guys, if you say yes to this, then the church is going to want to sell. That's a building, and it's a huge parking lot, and then there's little buildings. If you say yes to this, it goes all the way to Oakland Park. Yes, there are some stuff there already. I agree with the woman who just spoke. Just because it was doesn't mean this is our chance to give something to our kids, to our grandkids, do something right. The developer, it is beautiful, just make it lower. You could still have plenty of profit. It's too tall. It's too tall for the residents. There are so many single-family houses around that, it's going to shadow it, it's going to shade it. I don't care how good-looking it is. And let's do something right, you know? Downtown is being infilled. That should be infilled. Barrier Island does not have to be like Gold Ocean Mile or Sunny Isles. And part of the reason I'm so upset is I worry about the future, you know? I'm 62, how long am I? But I do care about the next generation, and we have a responsibility to the next generation. So, kudos to the good-looking building, but lower it. And kudos to the building in front of you for negotiating a great package. I would have done the same thing. I certainly would have wanted to get something out of it. But I beg to the planning and zoning, think about all of us, the future, just don't make it so tall. And really, it is Dolphin Isles and Lauderdale Beach. I didn't know it was CBA, but CBA to me is all the hotels and the big condos down there, the W. This is more residential than tall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Nagy, and on deck is Julie Dutchman.
Hello, my name's Stephen Nagy. I've been a 30-year resident at 3329 Northeast 18th Street, part of the Birch Park Fingers Street Association, which gives me, I think, five minutes, but I'll try to take three. All right? I've been sitting here, I've read through the package of 238 pages. I've listened to the presentation tonight. Two things jump out at me. The first thing is back-out parking. We have to have a 240-foot building to rectify back-out parking from 1950's mom-and-pop hotels. Back-out parking's over with. Forget about it. It's not an issue. The building is going to be demolished, and something's going to be built. However, the second thing I see tonight is deception, extreme deception, because I'm looking at these CGI photos of this building, and the building's not built, but there's a computer-aided-generated image on there showing that building is what it's not going to be. So, what I see is deception, and this is what stuck out to me. On page three of the application, "The property is a narrow lot with a width of 122 feet. Strict application of the yard requirement calculated by one-half of the building height," it has to be 240 feet, of course, "one-half of the building height combined with the requirement would generate 120-foot side yard, effectively depriving the applicant of any meaningful development potential." That means a conditional use application doesn't apply. If all development is deprived of the site, the proper application is a variance, because a variance is based on the theory that the property is going to be taken from the individual without compensation. So what I'm going to suggest to the board is, you deny the application because it was improperly filed and should be filed as a variance, or, in the alternative, the application should be denied because the developer lied to you. The fact is, they can build something else. They can build a smaller building. But they're lying to you. They're lying to you with CGI-generated pictures. They're lying to you, saying, "We can't build anything else on the lot." The second thing is, in the context, allowing the yard reduction in this context is consistent with the RMH60 properties that have similarly sought and received yard modifications. That was mentioned here. It was said, "Because we have other properties that can do it." Well, there is case law on that, and the case law was a case, the City of Jacksonville versus Taylor, says, "An applicant's request must be reviewed on his own merit rather than on the basis of previously proved variances in the jurisdiction." So you can't say, "Somebody else got a variance, so I got a variance." It just doesn't apply. Thirdly, this developer knew what he bought. He was either on constructive notice or on actual notice of what he could build on that land. And he buys it and says, "Oh, I can't build anything else now. I have to build a 240-foot building." Well, I don't think that's true. So, what I recommend is that you turn it down the application, and you have either refile it as a variance, which there are different standards and different criteria, or you turn it down because he lied to you, and it's not true. Lastly, I'd like to say, the owner, there's also case law, and it was Brookle House versus Monsanto. "The owner of land has no absolute or unlimited right to change the essential nature, character of his land so as to use it in a purpose for which it is unsuited in its natural state and which injures the rights of others." This is, these are judges writing this, but everybody else here that's opposed is trying to express the same thing to you. I suggest you turn this down, either redesign it, or refile it, or attempt a variance, but do not approve it. It's too tall. I've been out there for a while, and for 30 years, and I've seen a lot of redevelopment. I've seen the diagonal parking on the beach. I've seen the DOT put the handicap slots on the west side of the road on A1A when they redeveloped the beach. But I spoke with one of the board members, and he said to me, "You know, I think I'm going to vote for this, because I don't want the city to get sued." You know, somebody's going to sue the city, and I don't want the city to be spending money on a lawsuit, all right? I'd rather just let it be built and not have the city waste money when we can use that money for something else. Well, here's the truth. Somebody's going to get sued. If you turn it down, the developer's going to sue the city. If you approve it, Dolphin Isles, Lauderdale Beach, and everybody else is going to get together. I've already given the name of an expert attorney who handles these matters, and they're going to sue the city. So no matter what you're going to do, no matter what you do, somebody's going to be sued. So do the right thing, turn it down, and let the developer spend the money, getting a judicial review on this, and either have the court accept it or turn it down. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question for you, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You said some very serious things that make us think about what our decision has to be, because those are very serious threats. When you read on your notes certain remarks, were you reading remarks from the city, or you were reading remarks from other papers?
Are you talking about case law or the remarks from?
No, case law I'm very familiar with, but you mentioned some remarks that you had read, it sounded like city staff recommendations, is that?
No, this is from page three of the applicant's package, and it's in item number two. And it describes how there's no other use for the property. So this developer is asserting to you that unless you give him a 240-story building, there's no other use for the property. And that's what places this in the realm of a variance versus conditional use.
Got it. So when you mentioned deception, who are you referring to? The city staff, the city, or the applicant?
The developer and their representatives.
So you're saying he's deceiving us because he created something that he says he can't use, but city staff is recommending that we go ahead and look at this as a conditional use? I'm a little not clear on that.
No, I think what they wrote on here is either true or not true. They wrote, and this is part of the record, all right, and it's going to stick with them, and it's going to come back and be used as inconsistent statements if we go through, if we go forward with this. But they wrote that there's no other use for the property. It's not a threat, it's no nothing. It's their statement, it's in the record.
Right, right. But your comment was that it should go as a variance, it shouldn't go as a conditional use, so...
Well, I'm suggesting that to you. I would turn it down and make a second motion that they refile it as a variance.
Okay.
I'd like to see it as a variance.
Well, but that insinuates to me that I shouldn't rely on my staff, because that's not what my staff said. My staff said that it's a conditional use. So I'm trying to figure out, how do I look at this if I follow what you're saying?
Your staff is your staff. You can believe them if you want, all right? There's a lot of tall condos on the beach. We have unbelievable amount of developments, all right? Everybody's complaining about traffic and everything else. City staff just does what they do. They review stuff and say, "Okay, these blocks are checked." And these people are telling you what the real pragmatic application of this project is going to be, all right? So, I mean, city staff is city staff. I did a suit against Lauderdale by the Sea for a variance of a dock, and the city staff made up all kinds of assertions that weren't true. So maybe your city staff isn't doing their job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Julie Dutchman, and on deck is Alan Zeeman.
Hi, I'm Julie Deichman. I was sworn in, and I reside at 2300 North Atlantic Boulevard. So I'm probably about 450 feet from the building, proposed building. First of all, I'd like to say that I also think the building is beautiful, and there is a definite need for development on that parcel. I also represent Lauderdale Beach Homeowners Association. I am on the board, and I've been on the board for several years. We did vote on this project, and as it stands, 55 members voted no, and one member voted yes. So I'm addressing some of the points that were brought up there. First, of course, we have height. The request for height relief is just too high, although we've heard in the presentation several times that it's been explained to be 240 feet. If you look at the plans, the actual height from the first floor to the max height is 257.5 feet. At the meetings that I've sat through with the Amalfi representatives, we've also been told that the reason for changing from the original plan that fell within the current height allowances was to appease the building behind the proposed site. But does it really make sense to impact everyone's view in the surrounding neighborhoods and shading so much of the Lauderdale Beach neighborhood to appease one building? We don't think so. The next item that didn't resonate well was the subsurface setbacks, which really haven't been discussed. I'm not an expert at reading site plans, and I don't claim to be, but I believe the subsurface setbacks were a few mere feet on three of the four sides of the building, of the project. And on the front-facing side, I believe it was 15 feet. I don't feel that the team has explained how this will not affect surrounding roadways and communities. I couldn't find the excavation depth anywhere in the report, but with the building height so tall and an underground garage, I'm sure that the excavation depth will be very significant. As the architect mentioned, the back of the building literally backs up to the pool. As the architect mentioned, the back of the building literally backs up to the pool. I can't imagine having virtually no underground setbacks with that level of excavation. I understand, as we've just seen, that when comparing height and the number of units, the Amalfi may seem to fit into our community. However, if you look at the compatibility of the building as a ratio of lot size compared to its height, it's clear that there is no comparison or compatibility in our neighborhood. I did not hire a surveyor for these numbers, and I am certainly not a surveyor. However, in my internet search, I found, for comparison, the lot size of the Amalfi is about 37,500 square feet, and they're requesting 240, 257 feet tall. For comparison, the embassy is 229 feet tall and sits on 140,000 square feet. The white egret is 205 feet tall. It sits on 200,000 square feet. The oberrage is 277,300, maybe a bit plus tall, but it sits on 150,000 square feet. And the sapphire is 145 feet tall and sits on about 150,000 square feet. And again, I believe the Amalfi sits on 37,500 square feet. So, when you look at the height compared to the lot that it sits on, there really isn't a comparison within our community, and it's not compatible. So, again, I don't think I represented a community or a neighborhood that is opposed to development, and I know that I certainly am not. But I think that the height of the building needs to be scaled down a bit, and we need to address the underground setbacks, because as an adjacent neighborhood, we overwhelmingly don't support the project as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, one moment, please.
So, can I ask you a question? So, if the developer would be willing to reduce the height, would you support the project?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Zeeman, and Miranda Lopez is after.
Thank you very much, board. I'm proud to be here with my 13-year-old daughter, Lily. I'm proud to be here with some people who are directly affected by this development. People who walk their dog past this, who go wait for their bus stop with their children. That's usually not my problem, so let me start over. I'm Alan Zeeman. I'm the president of Dolphin Isles Homeowners Association. I am incredibly proud of the effort and the calls and the emails that were shared with you. It represents an honest and sincere effort to share with you how we feel about this. I mentioned that I am here with my daughter, Lily, and because Lily is here, I feel like I'm in this very odd situation of having spent 20 years in service to the Navy, having worked in a war zone for a year, having a chest full of medals that I left with, being hired back for 12 more years to work with the Three and Four Stars in the Pentagon, both Navy and Marine Corps, and somebody challenged whether or not I can count votes. I'm offended. I usually don't have to defend my honor in front of other people, but the bullet that was up there that said we took an irregular vote is false. It casts dispersion on me, and I'm offended by it. We actually used two-factor authentication when we voted. And so, we gave people a week because they wanted to learn more about this, which we think is great, nice to have an informed group of people. And then, everyone who voted by email, we called them back on their phone and made sure that their phone and their email matched to our records. So, I think we actually took probably the most safe homeowners association vote in the history of Fort Lauderdale. I'm very proud of it, and again, I'm offended that my character is under attack here today because I disagree, and I have a compromise that I would like to offer to the city and to the developers to do something which is very reasonable, which is develop at 16 stories. I don't think it's fair to haul my character in front of this board and to attack me personally. And that was an unfortunate bullet in a presentation that I feel like was slanted. I also think, before I go any further, how many people are here today to vote to speak against or to be here to represent against this development at 240 feet? Can you just wave your hands? Want to make sure that everybody understands that. This isn't make-believe. You want to talk about a form letter on an email? Give me a break. These are human beings that took their life away from their families and their activities today. Me for my... Lily's little brother's baseball, because I felt it was important to come and share this with you today. And what am I asking for? A compromise. Build your beautiful building. You want to be skinny? I'd like to be skinny, too. But I don't need to be skinny like this. I can be skinny maybe like Lily's height. Come down to 116 stories, around 173 feet, because that's what fits the character of the neighborhood. I am affected by this development. I don't live at the Everglades. Striking by, though, to me, that 98% of Fort Lauderdale Beach rejected this. 88% of Dolphin Isles rejected that. That's 500 homes. I hope you don't ignore 500 people when you sit on this board. I sat on a board just like yours for six years. I chaired the education advisory board for the City of Fort Lauderdale. I'm proud of the service we did, and it's difficult work, but it's very, very important to listen to the citizens of Fort Lauderdale. And the fact that there's 30 or 40 people here today that were willing to give up their evening and come and talk tells you more than even the vote 88 and 98% against us. What's this hooey about the Central Beach Alliance, by the way? How many people bought that? Give me a break. You want to see a picture of the Central Beach Alliance website? It shows the map that they proclaim to have, and that map stops at Sunrise Boulevard. Why? Because 98, 95, a huge percentage of Central Beach Alliance members, live south of Sunrise Boulevard. This is a development that on Slide 1 of their development said, "We're in Dolphin Isles." What other evidence do you need? Dolphin Isles is affected. Fort Lauderdale Beach is affected. We are human beings. We live in that community, and this community would like to see something built that's a lot more reasonable. If you follow the economics of this, which I hope you do, following the money is a really good way, if you sit on a board like this, to see what the disparity is. We sat out front in the parking lot today, an hour before this meeting, and had six pizzas and Diet Coke. We don't have any architects, we don't have any drones, we don't do CGI, we can't afford to do sophisticated surveys. All we can do as citizens of this city is to come and talk to you, email you, call you. It's insulting for people to say that we have form emails. I'm sorry. It's the best that some of our residents could do. You're gonna hear from some more people tonight? I think they're all asking for the same thing. Let's compromise. Let's find a nice skinny building that isn't six foot one, but might be five foot seven, like my lovely daughter.
That was the five minutes, sir.
You know, on the school board, we do the same thing. So, here I am on the other side of the dais and subject to the good set of rules. I appreciate that. I'm open to any questions if the board has any.
Any questions? I noticed, is your fine daughter looking to speak this evening?
Yes, sir.
You want to use a minute or two of her time, or you want to let her speak?
Oh, negative.
For herself, yeah. I mean, she gets three, that's why I'm just throwing it out there.
No, no.
So, she's not next, but...
Do you have a 13-year-old daughter?
I do.
Well, you don't want to steal a minute of her time.
And she wants all three minutes, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, you're gonna... what are you doing? You done, or you want a minute or two of hers?
I'm just saying, if anyone has any questions, because, you know, 500 residents is a lot to represent.
Okay. I don't see any at this time. Thank you very much, Mr. Zeeman. Ms. Miranda Lopez, and then we will hear from Ms. Lily Zeeman.
Okay, Miranda Lopez, I didn't swear, but I want to say the truth.
Thank you. Pull the microphone down a little so we can hear you.
Oh, my goodness, I am short.
Ms. Lopez, you swear to tell the truth of the whole truth?
Okay, first of all, I want...
Were you sworn in, Ms. Lopez?
Did she say she was sworn?
Were you sworn in earlier?
No.
Nope.
Yeah, I thought that's it. Do you swear to tell the truth of the whole truth, but not about the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I appreciate your time and efforts as land use board members, and respect your responsibility shaping our city to achieve a balance between cement and greenery, as well to improve our quality of life. To all of you, thank you very much. Today, we are here to consider the impact of the 240-foot Amalfi proposed development on the adjacent neighborhood, especially single-family Dolphin Isles. The requirements of the ULDR for neighborhood compatibility ensure that the new development fits the character of adjacent areas by mitigating impacts as a scale and between other things. Also, neighborhood compatibility says that development must preserve the character of existing neighborhoods. They are saying that we have buildings, already high-rise buildings. I want to point out that the high-rise buildings that they are in the west side are lower than the ones that they are in the east, and they are all much lower than the one that the new development that they try to build. And the other thing is, it was not correct to allow the amount of developments that they are building by the beach, because they are depriving the use of the beach or the look at the beach for the whole community. And if error had been done in the past, we need to be more conscious and try to make better. And also have to take into account the climate change. I have a house... my house was built in 1954, and a tremendous house. Never had a problem with that house, and in the last two years, I began to have serious problems. I live by a canal, and the water are coming underground, and I'm feeling the effect of the water, the underground water. Okay, the Amalfi heights has a great negative impact on the well-established neighborhood that is Dolphin Isles. As a permanent resident since 1976, the neighbors' well-being and the beauty of Fort Lauderdale coastal area, please do not approve the Amalfi project as it is presented right now. Its heights need to fit into our beloved neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Lily Zeeman, and Ken Fensler is next. Mr. Ken Fensler?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Lily, and I'm a student at Sunrise Middle School, and I'm here to speak against the proposed 240-foot condo development in my neighborhood. I came here tonight because my dad promised me pizza. When we walked in this building, he asked me if I wanted to speak. I said, "Why not?" This affects me. This affects my siblings and parents and neighbors and my community. This project not only threatens the character and scale of our community, it violates existing zoning laws that cap building height well beyond this proposal. Approving it set a dangerous precedent, undermining the legal protections that preserve our neighborhood's integrity. A 240-foot structure in a residential zone is not just effective, it's incompatible. It will cast long shadows, strain infrastructure, and disrupt the quiet charm that drew many of us here in the first place. This isn't about a building, it's about protecting our homes, our streets, and our way of life. Let's be clear, this isn't a rejection of the development, it's a call for smarter one. A shorter building would be more reasonable, especially considering the average in this area is 17 stories. We can grow without overwhelming. I urge the board to reject this proposal and stand with the residents who believe in thoughtful, lawful development. And I got the pizza. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicely done. Ken, there he is. And next is David Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak. The worst-case scenario, I had to follow her, right, really? Alan, thank you for having your daughter here. It's not only a great experience, but a wonderful, real civics lesson, and I think it's wonderful that your daughter's participating as well. Thank you for that, and why do I have to follow her?
Name, address, and then have you been sworn?
My name is Ken Fangler. I live at 3031 Northeast 22nd Street, Fort Lauderdale. I've been a resident of Dolphin Isles for 42 years. And a couple of things, just very briefly. We've heard a number of things, but there's one thing or two that we'll ask the board to consider. One is compromise, in that I give kudos to the architect, the development group, and those for a wonderful-looking project. It looks beautiful, but the height is something that we can't agree to. And my personal feeling is that, and question is, we saw two things that were compared with this presentation. One was density, and they spoke of density of the condos on the west side, white egret and number of condos. They all talked about density of those buildings. And then, they compared themselves to the condos on the east side of A1A. Now, I am a board... current board member and founding member of Dolphin Isles Homeowners Association, which came out of the building of the Palms condominium, which the City of Fort Lauderdale now admits that was a mistake at a height of over 300 feet. Was never gonna happen again. And to even bring that up is kind of a misnomer, because really, you gotta disqualify that one. But all the comparisons of height were to condos on the east side of A1A. With that, when the Palms was being built, and we've lived there for probably almost 30 years at this point with the Palms there, they're a neighbor of ours, good residents, but knowing that it won't happen again with some of the things that went on in City Hall and all the rest of the development projects, and it took a while for things, and everybody knew that our area of the beach was gonna develop after the South Beach End. We everybody knew that was finally... the final piece of the Fort Lauderdale beach is our area. And we're very thankful to see this development come in from this kind of downtrodden Airbnb type of thing. Looks wonderful, but we'll ask for compromise, and with the height. With that, there was a promise by past council members, boards, city council, that it would never happen again, that the Palms would be built, and promised that. And the concern was that we would live in Gulf Ocean Mile, and that that area between Oakland Park Boulevard and Sunrise would be the concrete tunnel. And I'll ask that the board not approve this as presented, that they approve it at the restricted height, or let's say, approved height, and not grant this variance, and that they don't be the first member of a council, board, of those to start the ball rolling, because we know there are a number of other developments that will take place in the coming years, coming down the pike, and that we don't need the concrete tunnel going down A1A. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. David Sullivan, and on deck, Gillian Sturmer.
My name's David Sullivan. I live at 2001 North Ocean Boulevard, the view which was mentioned in the presentation. One thing I would like to make clear is that we were never notified, they never spoke to our association. We have 157 units there. We butted off in Isles. We have a very, very good relationship with them as far as moving trucks, trash. They actually spoke at our association, Alan did, and we did put a vote out, which was 28 no, two yes. The two yes, I think, are the two people in the condo that are in favor of me. I'm also a real estate agent. I've been a real estate agent in the neighborhood for 15 years. Every building mentioned, the Palms, Hermitage, or Burge, I don't want to repeat myself, but they're on the ocean, they're in bigger lots of land, they're... I don't want to use that word deception, because I don't want to get like the other guy, but they're talking... these units are 3,700 square feet each. Our biggest unit is 1,600 square feet. So, you're talking units twice the size, half the lot size, and I just don't think the building fits there. Traffic is a nightmare now. I mean, you can't even get a delivery in my building. Drivers get tickets, UPS gets tickets, behind Dolphin Isles, they get tickets if they leave their vehicles there, and they want to put this three blocks away from us. I heard Bad mention about the Cambria, okay? They've been excellent neighbors. They worked with us when they built there. Do they have traffic? Yes, but it comes in off the side road, they have underground parking, they have a walkway for us to walk by, and it's four stories high. It's not 19 stories high. So, our association is dead-set against this project, and I hope you feel the same way we do. And again, I just want to make it clear, as was mentioned... And again, I just want to make it clear, as was mentioned, that they talked to us, they didn't talk to us. We haven't got any emails, I've been president for two years, I've been on the board for eight years. I walk the beach every day, and no one spoke to me. So I felt it was, you know, important that I show up today to represent my association. Any questions?
Any questions? No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's Gillian Sturmer. Okay, we'll keep her on there then. Is Brad Thornborough there? Brad Thornborough? Here he comes, here he comes. Come on down. And up next, we'll do Sue Dormin. After Brad.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time. I was previously sworn in. My name is Brad Thornborough. I live at 2506 Northeast 32nd Avenue. I'm going to try not to repeat what other folks have said, but I do want to point out a few things that Ms. Toothaker mentioned. The first is that there are no single-family homes adjacent to this property. They're proposing 240, 250 feet. The closest single-family home is 260 feet away. So it's the same height as the building. Let's see here. A lot of the buildings that were mentioned earlier were mentioned for density. They were not mentioned for height. The ones that were mentioned for height are very far away from this project. None of the buildings that are in the neighborhood, from the north end of our neighborhood to the south end, the single-family part of Dolphin Isles of North Beach, are even close to this height. They're all way south or way north. The closest property that I can think of to this is the 3030 building. It's five stories tall, it's on A1A, it's a similar-shaped lot. I believe the zoning might be different there, but it feels inclusive in the neighborhood, it feels like it fits in. It is not 240 feet tall. The goal of neighborhood compatibility is to avoid negative impacts on surrounding properties, preserving stability and aesthetic consistency while allowing for development. Everything the developers team discussed tonight was ordered to specifically exclude the single-family homes. They were referring to the other large buildings in the area fitting in with those buildings. But they're dead-center in a single-family neighborhood, actually dead-center between two single-family neighborhoods with 500 residents. The actual residents of the neighborhood are not feeling that this is compatible with what we see as our home. We walk up and down the street every day, twice a day. I've yet to meet a single resident in Dolphin Isles, in North Beach, or in any of the buildings that is for this project. Not a single one. And in fact, I have a good authority that the building adjacent to it, the Everglades Club, has actually received payment from this project in order to show up here and be in favor of it today. I guess that's all I'd like to say, and just in closing. Please consider, all the residents of the neighborhood, please lower the height from 240 feet, 120 feet, 150 feet. 240 feet is just too tall. Thank you.
So I have a question.
Thank you, thank you very much, yes.
So you think the building is beautiful, right? Except for the height?
I think that site could use some work, absolutely. I'd love to see a project there, I'd love to see more projects in that neighborhood. The issue for me is height.
The height and the size of the person. But otherwise you'd support it, right?
Absolutely.
They reduce it, okay, thanks.
I have a question for you also.
Sure.
I think it's the second or third time I heard tonight about a payment being made in exchange for approval. And nobody's defending the person, the association that's most impacted here, right? I hear everybody, but, you know, these people are sacrificing a lot.
Absolutely.
And they're wanting to approve it. Now, I'm the newest member here, and a lot of people don't know me, but I've been a high-rise developer for 40 years, from New York City down to Miami. I probably have 10 million square feet of high-rises. And I've never done a project over 30,000 units. Also mentioned, I have a master's degree from Harvard University in real estate development. And I've never, ever, ever done a project that I didn't pay my neighbor. So I want to make sure it's clear that we don't, developers don't pay to get approvals. It's got to be clear. We pay because, we pay now, we pay later, because we're going to damage that building. We're going to. I've never done a building where I didn't damage my neighbor. And my insurance company will have a large deductible that I don't want to deal with. And I don't want to have to build for three years a high-rise next to my neighbor where I'm going to have, you know, problems with them. I want to come up front, I want to be forward with them, I want to say this is what's going to happen, give me your concerns. And yeah, there's a contribution that needs to be done because of the impact that I'm going to cause them. So I want to make it clear for the record that your comment looked like there was an exchange of payment for approval. And I can tell you from my experience, that's just not true.
I understand. I'll clarify my comment. I do think there will be damage to the building, I think it'd be impossible to build a building that close without damage. Frankly, I think $150,000 is on the low end of what damage could be caused, between air conditioners, paint, settling. It could be in the millions. I was strictly bringing that up to point out that when that building shows up here to say they're in favor of it, it should also be mentioned that they have had that deal struck with a developer. I feel like that should be public record. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, let me take the temperature of the board. Do we need a bathroom break now? We have about 20 minutes left of speakers.
Hi, I'm Sue Dormin.
One moment, please, sorry, Sue.
Okay, sorry.
So can you go, just because the rest of the board wasn't ready? Okay. Can you? About 20 minutes, 18 to 20 minutes left of the speakers, and then we'll definitely take one. Can you move, Ken? Okay, all right.
Hi, I'm Sue Dormin, I live in Dolphin Isles, and I've been there 54 years. I don't think I'm naive, I know this building's going to get built. It's just too tall. We're not opposed, we love our condominium friends in our neighborhood. We've always joined in, we've always had them to our meetings and to our events in our neighborhood. It's nothing against a building being built on A1A. It's the building height of the building is going to be way out of proportion. The ones, the Hermitage and the Palms that they were talking about, those are on the beach. They're on huge pieces of property. This is so overbuilt for the size of the property, it's just, it's just not correct. It doesn't fit in our neighborhood at all. And it's really setting a very bad precedent. And I hope that you will not vote for it as it stands. I mean, at first, it was going to be lower, it was going to be the entire front of the white, I mean, the Everglades. It was going to be lower and in front of it. And I felt really devastated for those people because they will have no view whatsoever. And I, they were vehemently opposed to it, vehemently. But they were advised that if they didn't get on board, they wouldn't get any concessions at all. So take what you can get, and that was what I've heard. So they did, they took what they, they had to stand up here and be in favor of it. And they're not, but they want their concessions. So they got to do what they got to do. And I'm just saying, no one really wants this building in our neighborhood. And that's all I can tell you. Make it shorter, we will love the people. We'll be happy with everything that they have in this neighborhood if you make it shorter. It doesn't have to be 240 feet tall, it's just too tall. And it's on, it's not on the beach side, it's on our side. This is the neighborhood. This is, we don't want Galt Mile. And I guess it's just me, but I think the architecture is charmless, personally. That's just me. I don't like it at all, but I would be happy to have it if it was smaller, shorter. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gillian Sturmer? Another bathroom break? Okay. Molly Wilson? Okay, after Molly, I have Goran Dragoslovic? Dravoslavik? Dravoslavik? Gotcha. Good lesson.
Good evening, I was previously sworn in. My name is Molly Wilson. I live at 936 Intracoastal Drive, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33304. I strongly support the Amalfi luxury residences. I live in one of the neighboring communities, Sunrise Intercoastal, with my husband and my one-year-old. While the Amalfi will not directly affect us, I have certainly experienced my fair share of construction pains with the addition of Aqua Blue, the Belmont, soon-to-be Sage, and now potentially the new Gallery Amal. But I accept that change is inevitable, and the developer for the Amalfi has been extremely thoughtful with their design and community focus. We frequent the Central Beach neighborhood by car and by foot weekly and sometimes daily to visit friends and local businesses. I think the improved safety of the traffic flow and pedestrian walkways will have a significant and positive impact on the community. Once complete, the building will elevate the neighborhood and improve many aspects as well. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you very much. Goran?
Good evening, Goran Dragoslovic.
Much better.
And I hope everybody can hear me. So let me get my little notes. I can get against sworn in, so it doesn't... Yeah, I don't remember, so...
Mr. Spence, if we could please swear him in again?
Sure. These who are affirmed that the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So in 1985, I moved to Dolphin Isles. I bought my first house, so I have been living there for 40 years. Not just myself, I have two kids that are present here, my wife, and we all live in the neighborhood. My mom and dad lived in the neighborhood, my father passed away, so my mom still lives in the neighborhood. Besides that, I own a lot of properties in Dolphin Isles, between houses and apartment buildings. So I'm practically a block away from the Amalfi-proposed project. I love growth, and it's inevitable. Fort Lauderdale is growing, so I remember from Islands to Mark 2100. So I have been in the neighborhood, and I really strongly support the growth. When you look at the buildings like Hermitage, or Berge, or Palms, they give, you know, you look at Miami, how gorgeous it's becoming, they're giving special look to our beautiful neighborhood. So basically, I believe, I understand where developer comes from. With the height, he needs to attract very high-network individuals to our neighborhood. If the height is restricted, he will not be able to bring so many units or the state-of-the-art units. So he will not, I don't really think the numbers will work if the height is not what he's proposing. And I do not have any interest, I know the developer, I don't have any financial interest in a project, so I just want to put that for the record. I'm not gaining anything by supporting the project. So just for the record, I don't know if you guys are familiar, I did live, I own a condo at the Palms as well. And I did a little analysis when I lived there, you know, 20-plus years ago, when the project was built. In the building, there are 89 units in the first tower, Tower 1, on the south side. And I did kind of like little statistics. There were only 15 residents living in Tower 1, and I was the full-time resident for a while. So I really believe that Amalfi will attract really high-network individuals, and it will become their second, third, maybe fourth home. So there was a discussion about how many trips, the traffic and congestion and everything else. I think it's so irrelevant to talk about it. I think with 16 Airbnb that are presently at the location, the traffic is much heavier than it would be with such a luxury building. I mean, it's just a fact, and I do...
Sir, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I go to the bathroom? I'm kidding. My question is, you made a comment about the numbers just wouldn't work if it was that tall, is that what you meant?
Yes, but what happened is, when you go with the height, the price goes up.
Right.
And the view goes up, although the view is better on the lower floors. My thing is, you can work the numbers because construction has doubled or tripled in past, let's say, 20 years or 30 years since the Palms is built. So, and all of the sudden, he's bringing this state-of-the-art building that looks like an art piece, that doesn't even look like a, I mean, it's gorgeous.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, sir.
You just see buildings like that in Miami. You don't see, very rarely, I mean, Berge is nice, but this is, I mean, not much nicer.
I agree with you, but we're talking about 39 units, right?
Yes.
So if you had several floors that had more than one unit, that could possibly make up for the numbers starting to work?
I don't, I really don't think so. I mean, I, you know, I'm developer myself, and I looked at it, I just don't think the numbers would work. Honestly, I just don't think that, because the amount of money, because just look at the building, it's like a glass building. Just look at the construction that is proposed, it's just gorgeous, it's not cheap, so...
Thank you very much for your...
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Camila, I believe it's Kraken?
Yay.
And next is John, and again, Francosi? I'm sorry, the last letters are kind of... Is there a John Franciosi?
He's there, he's there.
There you are, good, sorry, sir, I can't read the last few letters, my fault. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone, my name is Camila. I wasn't sworn in earlier, I don't know if we need to take care of that.
Can I ask, are there members of the public that are looking to speak on this item? If you would stand and be sworn in at this time as well? You swear affirm that the testimony you are giving tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Now, full disclaimer, I did move to Palm Beach from Fort Lauderdale a couple months ago. So my address is 6644 Via Regina. But I actually stayed on the current site in one of the Airbnbs for about three months while we were working on renovations. Now, as someone who's attended school, worked, and resided in Fort Lauderdale for a majority of the last decade, it's very obvious that the city needs high-quality, sustainable development. And I know those words sound like they came off of a brochure, but what they really mean is that we need to focus on driving development forward in a meaningful way. And I keep hearing developer this and developer that, but the developer I know is Gareth Moore, who unlike most, lives and breathes Fort Lauderdale. And this building and the effort he's put into accommodating the neighborhood is a clear testament to that. Now, I lived on the current site for about three months, and it wasn't pretty, or safe for that matter. And due to the current stormwater situation, my car was basically at risk of floating away. Or avoiding a crash backing out onto A1A, which is definitely still a problem. Feel free to try doing it yourself, just park in one of the slots and take 15 minutes to back out. But during that stay, thanks to my very energetic new puppy, I walked up and down those streets on a daily basis. And I spoke to many of the residents adjacent to the project recently. These were friends that I had made in the past and tried to get out here during this hearing. Now, mind you, most of them who either support the project or have no objections to it aren't here today. And believe it or not, not because, believe it or not, because they're fearful of the backlash they would receive from a handful of neighbors. And some of the rumors they heard about the project that went around included that its 300 units, which we now know is false, allow short-term rentals, obviously not true either. And if we're discussing beach preservation, you're trading 17 rotating occupants, questionable occupants, by the way, who couldn't care less about our beaches or area, with 39 actual neighbors who will know your name. That's a major upgrade. And the current sites from the 70s, I believe, doesn't retain its own surface rainwater, and we know that that's a big issue for Lauderdale as well. and we know that that's a big issue for Lauderdale as well. I've seen that when I lived on La Solis. It drains to the surrounding neighborhood, and the Amalfi routines, all the drain water on-site. Now, I could stand up here and reiterate a lot of the facts already presented, I actually wasn't even planning on speaking today, but I would rather just highlight that Fort Lauderdale has become the economic and social hub it is now because of positive thinking and substantial investment into the city's future. And this project needs to be judged on its own merit and on the fact that it followed the code and planning process, a process that took over two years. Failing to do so will set precedent that, stand alone, neighborhood HOAs can impact zoning decisions on an arbitrary basis rather than the code. Now, I heard a lot about this building setting precedent for the future, but each project that comes before the board needs to meet neighborhood compatibility criteria at that time. And as we've seen, the Amalfi is a significant asset. Many people agree that there should be a project in the area. It's an asset not only to the neighborhood, but the economy and public safety on the block. I can attest to that personally, and so will many of the residents that walk down that street. And whether we like it or not, we are on the map now, not only competing with the likes of Miami and West Palm Beach, but on a nationwide level. We're a premier coastal destination, that's become very obvious over the last year, so let's keep our city moving forward. And if we're following the money, follow it right back to your doorsteps, because a project like this...
Your time is up.
...will only positively impact Fort Lauderdale's economic growth and value.
Thank you. Thank you very much. John, you're up.
Thank you for letting me...
Sturmer's up next. Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. John Franciosa, I did not plan on speaking tonight. 2585 Southeast Fourth Street. I've been in real estate now for 20 years in every respect of representing investors, developers, new development sales. I actually was the one who brought the agency from LA to Florida to bring a hip new feel to what goes on in development projects. You know, I'm here tonight, and I think a lot of arbitrary statements, and there is people that are harmed, I understand that, and it's very difficult for you guys to decide who's more harmed in this situation, right? A developer who's following the rules that were established by you all, right? So they've come, there's a speed limit on every road. You go between this speed or the highest speed. If you go over that speed, you get a ticket. Nobody here has exceeded the speed limit identified by the board. So when I'm representing developers, and they identify a zoning code, right, that's how we underwrite an acquisition. We look at the zoning code, what's allowable, what the max density is, and what dollars that were yielded. So a developer who is going to the max allowable within the code is just doing their job well. They're not trying to harm neighbors, they took it all into account. That's why they have public different comment periods, right? We've been through three comment periods, and each time, they spent more money to modify to meet the needs of everybody they spoke to. So all I'm saying is, the only precedence that can be set here is that I will not bring my investors here to not have an as-of-right zoning code. I'll say, guys, there's no guarantee. They say 240, but it could be 120, which means, what are we going to do? We're going to risk hiring the best architect in Florida at not the cheapest cost to get a maybe, or no, this doesn't work. So what we're doing here is potentially setting a precedent for developers to stay away. Now, the same people complaining about height are going to complain about dilapidated site when the investors don't come. That's all I have to say, and if anybody has any questions, free answer.
Thank you very much. Did Jillian come back? Jillian Sturmer? No? Rebecca?
No, he says no.
Dorser Max? Dorser Max? Hello?
Desarmo?
Desarmo?
Desor, is that next?
The U.S.
Desarmo? Thank you, ma'am. French. Got a lot to learn.
Do I need to be sworn in as well? Or, okay. Hi, I'm Rebecca Desarmo.
She may have missed the last. Have you been sworn in yet?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you for telling us.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Desarmo. I'm proud to call Fort Lauderdale home. I want to express my support for the Amalfi because I believe it represents smart, thoughtful development, the kind that helps our city grow responsibly while also enhancing the character of the beautiful community that we live in. Prior to choosing Fort Lauderdale as my home, I lived in London for five years, and I've seen how smart living and design become essential, especially when space is limited. There, architects have learned to maximize smaller areas with creativity and efficiency, building upwards, not outwards. The Amalfi follows that same principle, combining elegance, modern design, and smart use of land to create something beautiful and practical for Fort Lauderdale. And I'll admit, as someone married to an Italian, I might be a little bit biased by the name, but I think Amalfi truly captures the sense of quality and sophistication that this project does bring to our city. Fort Lauderdale is growing, and projects like this show that progress can be smart, sustainable, and respectful to the place that we all love so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I wasn't planning on speaking at all tonight, but there's some of the images that I saw that I might be helpful to bring up a slide. I'll speak to it, and we'll see if the audience needs it. Maria Lopez, I live at 2100 Northeast 53rd Street in Fort Lauderdale, 33308. I walk this stretch...
Have you been sworn?
Excuse me?
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, I stood up earlier.
Thank you.
Yes. So I walk this stretch of the beach from 23rd up to the Hermitage every day. And the comment that I want to make on the images that were shown, what was said was that there are no single-family homes, and I felt like that wasn't exactly right. From the Hermitage to 23rd Street where Berge is, on the other side of A1A from this building, it is exclusively single-family homes. And you can see it in her images, it's very clear. Also, from where the new building is, and it's a terrific building, it's, I'd love to see that building built somewhere else. All of it is not single-family home, but going west, but it is single-story. So I think the building itself is completely out of context within that stretch, from 23rd Street up to Oakland Park. It changes the character of that entire area. I think it's inappropriate. I think it affects all the homeowners that live in that area, whether they are in a duplex or maybe not an isolated single-family home. Just, I think it's an inappropriate building for that site.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. I'll now ask again, do we wish to have a 10-minute bathroom break or recess?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do a 10-minute recess for the bathroom, and then we will resume with closing statement and then discussion.
Have a closing statement or rebuttal?
Are we done with the speakers?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the Board. Thank you. I know this has been a very spirited discussion. You know, I want to state that it's really an honor to represent Gareth. He really does try to be a good neighbor. He lives in the neighborhood. He knows so many of the people. You can see that there's, you know, there's a lot of passions on both sides. I do, I do want to point out one thing. Someone said that we never reached out to the View and that I said we did. I never said that. The View is part of the Central Beach Alliance and we, we held all of our meetings the proper way, the way that that's defined by the code through the Central Beach Alliance. So that's how, if they wanted to vote, they would have voted through that, through that association. I also want to just say, you know, I want to defend the Everglades a little bit. When we were negotiating the settlement with Everglades, you know, money was not discussed. It was not about money for them. It was about, it was about the View corridors, the safety of their building, their retaining wall, the privacy fence, some issues with their, you know, with their pool, all the things that you would expect them, you know, to be concerned about. And it was only after we agreed to all of the things that is in that letter agreement, and let me just state very clearly for the record, everything that's in that letter agreement, we agreed to. I will ensure that the city has a copy of it. It's, you know, happy to share that with everybody. It was only after that, there were some items that they, you know, were concerned about, like what's going to happen after the fact, you know, with the quality of their pool deck. There might be dust from the construction and whatnot. And so we offered money to address aesthetic things that they might want to do at the, at the terminus of the construction of the project. So it was not an exchange for them coming here. Thank you, Mr. De La Torres, for your comments. That's a very common thing for the most affected neighbor that's directly adjacent to you, for there to be some kind of settlement between the parties to ensure that they're taken care of. It's not, it's, it's not to get them here. We're, I think what got them here is because this is a better project than what we started with. I want to state again really quickly, and I'm going to just limit it to this, when, when the properties were purchased, again, this area of the beach, we're not, this, this property does not sit in the single-family zoning area. It sits in the middle of the RMH 60. RMH 60 was downzoned from 300 to 240. And when he purchased these properties, and thank you to the gentleman who spoke, who I don't, I don't even know, I wasn't expecting you to be here, but the comments were so, so accurate in that when somebody makes an investment and they buy a piece of property, they rely on the zoning code that's in place. They look at that code and they say, okay, this is what I think I'm allowed to do. Yes, we have to ask for it. Yes, it's a conditional use. That's why we're here. We hope we made the case to you that we are worthy of your support. We look forward, even for the neighbors that spoke against it, we look forward to being good neighbors to you too. We're always, I'm always available. Gareth is available. Dermot is available. Our whole team is here. We'd be more than happy to work with you. I do want to say it again, if it was missed on you, I did not ask our supporters to bombard you with emails and phone calls. I could have done that. I did not. I did it in what I thought was a respectful way, not to clog up your emails and your text messages and your phone calls. We compiled all of our letters of support and we submitted them in one package. We gave it to the city and the city submitted that package to you. There were more than 80 letters of support that got submitted as part of that package, and there were several that came after that I didn't even bother submitting, but all in all, I believe it's north of 85 letters of support from Fort Lauderdale residents, from people that live in Fort Lauderdale, and predominantly those people are from the Central Beach area. So I would ask you to take that into consideration. You know, as well as I do, that people are in support if things never show up. It's only the people that are opposed that show up. The people that are in support are good. They're home with their families. We respect that. Thank you for your opportunity to be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the counsel for the applicant? Yes, for Mr. Spence?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to ask about the, a lot of the concerns about this building project, one of them has been about the coral base. So I just wanted to ask, you guys, have you considered the potential effects of any ground subsidence and to that end, any damage to your underground garage for any groundwater intrusion, any saltwater intrusion, any possibility of a, say, fracture in the underground parking lot and potential groundwater contamination due to that?
I'm going to ask my architect and my, and my engineer and my construction guy to come up. Those are very good questions. Thank you for asking.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, so the way the building will be built, it's going to be agar cast piles. So basically, it's like a screw. We're not pounding piles in the ground and we're not pounding sheet piles into the ground. We do this in various buildings, including historic buildings in Miami Beach where we are five feet away from a historic structure. That's number one. And then there'll be soil mix for the basement, which is a very quiet process and procedure. Happy to also supply you with the information, the technical information. That's number one. Number two, we will also have sensors around the property. So there is a record, a continuous record of any vibrations that may come across, and there shouldn't be any. There's a limitation on that. We will have those monitors. We are on soft sand. We're not on coral rock, so it will be agar cast and it will be basically a pool in the ground where we put all the cars. And that's where the value is. That's where we are able to take the cars, not only take them off the street, but also put them below ground, below grade, and have more green open space. And we are not on top of, some terminology, just to be clear, was stated about the pool relationship. So each building is 20 feet, right, Matt? 20 feet away from the property line, so it's 40 feet in total. And the purpose of us pushing our tower back towards the north is as the sun rises in the east and sets in the west on a southern axis, that they will continue to have sun on their pool and in our front yard.
Hello. My name is Dermot Johnson. I'm a structural engineer and I came to New York to do my master's, 20 years ago at Columbia University, and I work for the Moore Group as an executive. Just to let you know, we've engaged geotech engineers called Langen Engineering, and Langen have already done borings. They bring a machine in and they do one-inch borings and they go down 100 feet, and they've already done six or seven borings on the side around the existing properties to determine what the material is. And with that pile design that's done by the geotech and the civil engineer who's here, firmly negates any necessity for any problems ever again with the foundation, the ground going forward and the issues of the neighbor.
Does anyone have any questions? Any other questions for this gentleman or no? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for applicant or applicant's counsel or anything? Okay. Seeing done, I close that and bring it back to the Board for discussion and a vote?
I have a question for staff.
Please.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. De La Torres.
I'm going to talk to staff for a minute. I'm trying to be clear as to the zoning that we're looking at and what we're voting on. So the RMH 60, if I'm looking at the zoning map, does that apply only to those five folios? Or does it apply to more than just the five folios I'm looking at?
The subject property is in RMH 60, but the RMH 60 zoning district extends north and south of it, sort of aligns along A1A.
No, I see that, but I only see five folios in RMH 60. Does it extend beyond that on A1A and south or north?
Yes.
Okay, so it does. It's that skinny line going up.
Right.
When I cross the ocean, the Ocean Boulevard, and I go into the other neighborhoods, that says RS 8. So does the same rules apply to RMH 60 as RS 8?
No, they do not.
And then when I go south of RS 8, I see a planned urban development. So does that, does that have any differences in what we're looking at here and voting on in this zoning?
Yes, it does. That was approved as a separate zoning district for that particular project.
Okay, so the planned urban development was actually a completely separate type of codification to the code because it is a planned urban development. It doesn't have the same applications.
Planned unit development, yes, correct.
So on the final question, if I look at RMH 60, there's, I'm not clear as to, by right, it's 120, but where did the 240 come from eventually? How did that, how did that happen?
Well, the zoning was adopted around 1997, and so there was also a change to it, excuse me, 1989, and then 1997, there was a change to it. And then most recently, in about 2002, there was a zoning in progress that reduced it to, by about 20%, which was adopted in 2004, so that it's officially, it was officially codified to be up to the 240 feet as a conditional use process, whereas prior, or in other RMH 60 zoning categories throughout the city that are not east of the intracoastal, it's 150 by right and up to 300 feet by conditional use.
Okay, so the applicant here and future applicants in RMH 60 will all have the same right to apply for conditional use, correct?
That's correct.
And they can all go up to 240 in the future?
East of the intracoastal waterway.
So all of the people along this zoning will have the same rights to come to us and ask for a conditional use to go up to 240 as part of the code, the codification of the city, correct?
Subject to criteria, yes.
Got it. So by rejecting this project, we're not stopping the future from coming at us under the same zoning, correct?
I can't speak to the future, but the project's in front of the Board under a conditional use review, and it's subject to the Board's review and approval through this public process.
Right.
As a conditional use.
But, but, but my, I want to be clear, we can't stop people in the future who have buy land here if we reject this at 240. Let's say, we say, hey, we don't want 240, go back, go back to the applicant, let's say, from the applicant, go back to the neighborhood. In the future, if somebody else buys another piece of property in that zoning, will that preclude them from the 240?
No, any, any application would stand on its own merits. So any applicant or any property owner that has property in this zoning district would be subject to the same criteria and requirements and the same processes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make clear I understood what we're rejecting and approving because I thought I heard very well that, and I think one of the people talking mentioned of a church, you know, the church is next. Well, if I'm looking carefully here, there's a lot more in the church. And, you know, we, we could be setting a precedence here that if it's unstoppable, you know, we could be looking at all kinds of different things happening that may or may not be good for the city or for this, this area. So thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gannon?
Thanks. You brought up a good point there, actually, and you're right in that anyone else could still try to go up there if, if this one's rejected. But if this one is approved, it would be very difficult to stop any other ones that are working their way, including the church. That's the thing, too. That, that's what we're getting at. It would be difficult to stop when you say you already gave them, how can you not do me?
Well, according to what I heard, is that every, every applicant stands in their own merit. So, so it doesn't mean that we're setting a precedence where it's automatic. They still have to apply and they still have to come before us for us to determine if the specific conditions is something we want. What I'm trying to do is look at it from a perspective of what's in the best interest of the neighborhood, right? A good developer looks at what's in the best interest of the neighborhood and complements it. And so when I look at that and I say, wait a minute, you know, it's not going to make it more difficult, but what I'm hearing to other people, and it's not going to make it easier. So if this is in the merit zone and we're able to look at it from that perspective, then we are doing what's right for the neighborhood and for the city, right? Because obviously, the controversy here is very, very, you can see it clearly, right? So you can't take one side or the other because that's, I don't think I'm here for that. I think I'm here to do what's in the best interest of the city's future. And that decision is a very serious one. So I'm trying to get my, my, my hand around, okay, where, where do I vote on this? Because if I do it one way or the other, I'm going to make somebody happy, somebody very, very sad. That's not what I'm here for.
And that, that is where we must live. We must live more like at 5,000 or 10,000 feet, not say, we don't want to hurt the Everglades condo next door, or we don't want to do this to even how, it's, we have to rise up. You've got to, you brought the right perspective and say, what's going to happen overall? How does it fit in overall and what are the implications? So yeah.
But that was a huge, let me tell you, that was a massive impact. The fact that the people that are 20 feet away.
Oh, yeah.
Approved it, and the people on the other, on the other side, you know, disapprove it, it's just, it's just a massive thing because they're very impacted by that, right? So you got, it's trying to balance. So we got to ignore all of that and look at what's in the future for this district.
Yeah.
So Board members, Duane Spence, interim city attorney. I just wanted to try and focus the Board on the criteria for the conditional use as part of your package. Being that it's a quasi judicial hearing, the standard by which any court challenge will review is whether or not this applicant has met their burden of showing that they've met the criteria in the code. So this Board hasn't been challenged in a while. Our Board of Adjustment has, and they're also a quasi judicial Board, and in those cases, the question that the court has always raised and has found, and they haven't been successful in the last two challenges, that it was stating that the Board did not review based on the criteria. So I just want to try and focus the discussion and, and the Board's attention to the criteria in the code that you need to evaluate to determine whether or not they have met the criteria with regards to the conditional use and the other criterias for the site plan approval and the modification of the yards.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. McCartney, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll, I'll talk about criteria because I think that's what we have to do. And first of all, I want to thank so many people for coming out because they're obviously passionate about this one way or the other, and that makes for good governance. But I want to note, especially this fact, the precedence has been set. The precedence is set in the land use zone. And in RMH 60, as a matter of right, one can go to 120. With conditional use, they can go to 240. So that means always 120, sometimes 240, and anything beyond that, never. That's what it's, that's what it is. And it is up and down that stretch. And so while this may be the first project that is on that side and is of that height, it is not intended to be the last. And so this isn't setting any precedent should we find that that criteria is met. That precedent has been set. But as for the criteria, when we talk about compatibility, we don't talk about, and I can understand why people feel this way, we don't talk about, it's right beside the building beside it, and is that compatible? Is it the same color as the buildings in our neighborhood? Is that compatible? Do I like it? Is that compatible? That's not compatibility. Compatibility is, does it, is it comporting with the law? Does it comport with the zoning that is in? And so while we may not like a height, we may not like some attributes, we have to apply the precedence of the zoning code and apply the facts to that. So in this instance, we've heard testimony that the building was once a box and was shifted, that is, the orientation was shifted, so it would have a lesser effect on things like shadow and scale and visual nuisance. We've learned that they put parking underground so that has less traffic, noise, odors, and other issues. We see that they have done a number of things that would maintain the integrity of the neighborhood as those sorts of things are defined in this code. So as I see it, understanding that some are not happy with the height of this building, I see that it is in fact a compatible use and that it comports with the law. And if it comports with the law because it's a compatible use, I feel we have no choice but to approve.
Mr. Gannon?
Yeah, to that, you're, you're heading in the right direction, especially with the nicer things, special things that they've done. But also, you have to, it would have been nice had they, let's put it this way, they would have had, without going into the ground and had a stacking device, they would have had two stories of podium, is what it was. And they don't. But it would have been really nice if they'd gone underground and then lopped off two stories on, from the top. Why didn't they lop off two stories from the top? So they went underground, but still asked for the max. If they had gone underground and said, look, we're going to make, do that so we can keep it down a little bit for you guys, that would have been what I was kind of looking for, something like that myself. But still, they, what they did was enable themselves to give more floors of building, of units to sell. You know, see, it's, I don't know, I hope, I hope I'm making sense with that, but that's how I see it. They didn't follow through all the way with that one there. And you get two floors down from that, lop off a couple more, and I think everyone here would be much, much more happy. We wouldn't be facing all of this here, too. That's how I saw it.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
I appreciate what Sherri said, but one of the concerns I have, and I'd like to hear from you all, is that, do you remember what we did on Hendrick's Isle with side yard modifications? Now we're in a situation where we have a beautiful building, they have the right to go 240 feet, but we're doing a side yard modification. And, you know, one, I, I, that worries me that we're going to continue down the path of giving everybody side yard modifications as more development comes and get the criticism of, you know, does anybody, yeah?
Because I agree, and I remember, we're constantly talking about that. And I think that what this Board said, I think it might have been a communication to the Commission, was this makes things impossible to build. That section of the code needs to be revised. I think we did a communication to the Commission asking them to do that. So that, that remains a problem, that the side yard modifications and the one-to-one step up are impractical and, and that needs to be revisited by the Commission. I think we all agree to that.
Good, Ms. Scott? You're done? Ms. McCartney, good. Any other members have anything? Okay, I see none. Do we have a? Do we have a?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the project as, as it is brought to the table by the, by the applicant. And I know that's not exactly by my cheat sheet, but I don't cheat. I like pizza.
Mr. Spence, does that satisfy you, sir?
That's the gentleman's motion, but
But, I mean legally, do we need to read this thing like we've been verbatim?
We, we recommend, we recommend that you adopt the resolution so that we have a, by law, we have to provide them with a written account of the approval. So, that's why we came up with the resolutions. So, if, if we can interpret your motion as, as approving the resolution, approving the item, and containing all of the rest of what you've stated, that would be fine.
That is correct. That's what I'm, I'm motioning.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, I would second, if the gentleman would accept this amendment, that it include the settlement agreement with Everglades? That that become part of?
Actually, that's a very good idea. I think that should be public. I, I, I motioned that we approve it as per the resolution and include the, the letter of agreement with the Everglades condominium as part of, part of the public record.
So, I do have concerns about including that as part of a, maybe a prohibited exaction on our part, but if the applicant states that it's a proffer?
We are proffering the settlement agreement with Everglades in its entirety and would like to make it part of the record and part of the site plan conditions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. So, that's the motion.
Okay, and I believe we have a second. Mr. Spence, you're satisfied, just to confirm?
Oh, and we'd like clarity as to whether or not you're adding staff's conditions.
I think, I think that's the vote, is that we're adding all the staff conditions that are stated in the resolution.
We are satisfied.
We accept those as well. We accept the staff conditions.
And that's your second?
Sorry, second, but for, for the record, maybe Mr. Spence can help us out and, and direct or help craft the actual motion so that it is really super clear. I think, you know, as we're batting it around, it might not be clear, especially in a written record.
If, I can ask the recording clerk to read back what you have?
Okay, there were several parts. Mr. Torres wanted to have a motion to approve the project as brought to the table by the applicant, and then we added per the resolution, and then someone added to include the letter of agreement.
Now, we're adding as per staff conditions.
Okay, so, so what I would recommend is that it state a motion to approve the resolution finding that the applicant's application meets all the criteria of the code, accepting the applicant's proffer to include the, what was the agreement?
The settlement agreement.
The settlement agreement as part of the conditions and accepting all of staff's conditions. And specify the settlement agreement with Everglades condo.
Okay.
Let me get the
Condominium.
In terms of the first motion, De La Torres, and second motion, Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Yes, Ms. Scott has something to say, so. But you're clear, it's not to add to it, she has a comment, I guess. But you're clear with the motion and, and the second and everything?
Yes, I am, yeah.
So, this is just a comment?
I'm still allowed to make a comment at this point, I think.
Yeah, we haven't cast a vote, so.
Yeah, correct. I, you know, listening to all the testimony from both sides, listening to what Sherri said, listening to our new member here, it's just become apparent to me that, you know, this is legal, they're following the rules. I am, I feel bad for some people, happy for others, and it's a very difficult vote for me.
For a lot of people, yeah, okay. And again, you're clear, we're good. You can call the mo, uh, roll call when you're ready. Yep, get yourself all clear.
So, if I can, a resolution of the planning and zoning board of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan level three conditional use development permit for increasing building height and approving modifications to the requirements for the front, north side, south side, and rear yards for a 39-unit multifamily residential development for the property located at 2317 North Ocean Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the residential multifamily high-rise, high-identity district, case number UDP S24035, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Mr. Donaldson?
No.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torres?
Yes.
And Chairman Teague?
Yes, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for your participation with that. All right, item number five, case number UDP Z25002. Wait, actually, let me see, it's actually, it's case four. Let's give him, we'll give him a second to exit. If everyone will please exit as quietly as possible. Thank you, we have other items. I call case number four, UDP. Ladies and gentlemen of the gallery, please exit quietly. Take the discussion outside, please. Okay, we are now going to hear case number UDP T25009. Disclosures?
Actually, Chair, hi.
Yes.
If we can combine both
Ooh.
items for discussion, of course, we'll approve them separately, but
Mr. Spence, are you okay with the combination?
Yes, just to be clear, yeah, they're both legislative, we can combine them both, but vote separately on each.
Does the public get to weigh in on these? Of course, right?
Correct.
That's what everyone's here for.
So, what, what both items are, are part of a comprehensive rezoning. The first part of it is dealing with the text that will be added to the ULDR, and the second part is the actual rezoning of the properties to the new districts that you're going to discuss. And that will be explained by
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
I'll read both case numbers in that we're hearing, and then we will vote on them separately. So, number four, case UDP T25009, and case number UDP Z25002. Disclosures, Mr. De La Torres?
No disclosures are necessary for this.
Oh, no.
It's legislative.
Okay, fine. Very good. Read it right through, please.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Carlaan Devonish with Development Services Department. Tonight, I am accompanied by folks from our CRA department as well, Mr. Clarence Woods and CRA planner, Seja Omenjivar. And tonight, as mentioned, this is a effort for the central city rezoning, two items that we're gonna, that I'll be presenting on, and then, of course, will be voted separately. Okay, so the discussion points would be giving a bit of the project background, focusing on the rezoning map that's being recommended. We'll go through the categories for the proposed uses, dimensional requirements, intensity, streetscape requirements, park requirements, special regulations, and the development review process that we're proposing. So, this effort has been going on for quite some time. It is a multi-decade effort. It originally, conversation started back in 2002, but the effort actually initiated in 2018, when the city hired consultants to actually go through and propose a rezoning for this area. There's been several iterations for the proposed rezoning map, but I think, even though we've moved on from some of what was proposed in the past, the intent still stands, which is to establish form-based regulations that address building and streetscape designs, to create a sense of place for the area, and to ensure a range of housing options while considering community impacts, and also streamlining the development review process and creating more certainty for residents and for developers. This is an effort that has been a part of the central city redevelopment plan. It's been a goal set forth in that document, as well as being a part of the efforts for comprehensive, for the comprehensive plan. So, this is just to show some pictures of the past. This, I believe, some of these pictures are stemming from 2018. This shows a few of the workshops that were done back in those days, some of the board members back in the day, and then how the project was originally proposed to be rezoned. And again, this is just one of the many options for rezoning since the project has started. So, the recommended rezoning for this area would be for three different zoning districts. These rezoning will span along Sunrise Boulevard, starting at, right up before the ramp for I-95, and heading east all the way to the FEC railway tracks, and then going up to Fourth Avenue, northeast Fourth Avenue, which was a different zoning district, and then northeast 13th Street, going all the way up to the end of the CRA boundaries, heading north, which I believe ends around northeast 15th Street. So, the proposed use categories for this area is very similar to what is within the existing code right now. What I've provided right now is just the categories, but I did provide a comparison table of the proposed usage, uses for the existing zoning districts and what is being proposed, and that was provided as exhibit three in the T25009 staff report. So, as you'll see, the only new category that we're proposing for the new zoning districts would be adding residential use and mixed-use development as its own standing. But as you can see, automotive, boat, watercraft, commercial recreation, providing food and beverage services, things like retail service, lodging, light manufacturing, and public purpose uses are just some of those categories that are being proposed. In terms of the dimensional requirements, that is also, what, what you're seeing right now is just what is being proposed, but I did also provide a comparison table in the, again, same staff report, the T25009, as exhibit four, and it shows a comparison table of what the existing zoning district requirements are now and what we are proposing. And I'll just go through this really quickly, because it's been a long night, so I'm being considerate. But what, the main difference between the dimensional requirements that we're proposing now to what is existing is that we're proposing form-based regulations. So, what that looks like is providing podium, tower separation, tower setbacks, and floor plate size is part of what the form base would look like. What is also different in what we're proposing is, would be the height. Currently, the maximum height for all, for the three, four zoning districts that are currently in place is at 150 feet in height. And what we're proposing along Sunrise Boulevard would be 105 feet by right. And if the developers or applicants are proposing affordable housing, they're able to go up to 125 feet without having to go through a higher level of review, so that would still be a site plan level two process. But if the applicant would like to go up to the 150 feet in height, then that would be conditional use, sort of like what we just went through. So, they would have to adhere to the existing conditional use criteria. For the proposed zoning districts along Fourth Avenue and 13th Street, we are proposing a maximum height of 80 feet. And that's it, no conditional height to go above and beyond. The maximum height is just at 80 feet for those two zoning districts.
Yes, yes, Mr. Donaldson, go ahead.
Mike, just so everyone can hear you.
Sorry. So, in the, the corridor of north
Northeast 13th
Northeast Fourth and northeast 13th Street, when you said that that would be an 80-max, no conditional use, what is that area currently zoned at?
That is currently, the zoning is 150 feet in height. The zoning districts are CB for both of those corridors.
So, we're actually reducing the height from what is currently allowed at 150 down to 80?
Correct.
Is there a, any state laws or anything that are, play into this, that we're able to reduce this? Because it's basically down, down zoning. So, is the city allowed to do that?
So, there is currently a law that, that's on the books that is supposed to deal with disaster relief. It's commonly known as Senate Bill 180, that puts basically a restriction on municipalities from adopting more restrictive or more burdensome regulations between a time period that started last year, October through October 1st of 2027. The, and we'll discuss later how we're, but the city is, is in, doing a legal challenge to that law presently, joined other municipalities throughout the state to challenge the law. But in terms of how we're implementing this comprehensive rezoning, we're looking at it on a global level in terms of what the comprehensive rezoning scheme is doing. We do know that there are some objections to some of the code provisions that, in certain categories are deemed to be more restrictive, and we are proposing a solution to that that we'll discuss later as well.
All right, I'll continue. So, to dig into a little bit more of the dimensional requirements, what we are proposing for the podium is a minimum height of 25 feet or two stories, and then you can go up to five stories or 55 feet for the podium. For the step back, so once you hit the podium, you'll be able to go 15 feet or 12 feet, depending on if you're on the primary or secondary street. Northeast Fourth Avenue, for instance, would be considered a primary street, but the side streets would be considered as secondary streets. And then, there will be tower separation requirements of at least 30 feet. And then, of course, a minimum, sorry, maximum floor plate sizes. So, for residential uses, the maximum floor plate size will be at 10,000 square feet. And for non-residential uses, the maximum floor plate will be at 16,000 square feet. To address density, at this point, we can't really do much with the density because of the land use. So, right now, what we do have available would be the flex units, and as some of you are aware, we are out of flex units for the entire city, but we do have other options. So, the other option would be the policy, the county policy 2.16.4, or what a lot of folks call it, just Geller units. So, folks would be, be able to provide Geller units along Fourth Avenue and Sunrise Boulevard, not so much 13th Street, because it's considered a city street, but that is an option for redevelopment along those corridors. And then, of course, there is that state statute for live local, so that would be available for any of those parcels. The streetscape design is proposed, as I mentioned just earlier, we are proposing primary and secondary streets. So, primary streets would be our major corridors, such as Sunrise Boulevard, and major streets, I should say, rather. So, Sunrise Boulevard, northeast 13th Street, northeast Fourth Avenue, seventh, northeast Seventh Avenue, Andrews northeast Seventh Avenue, Andrews Avenue, and northwest Ninth Avenue or Powerline Road. And then our secondary streets would be those side streets that I mentioned, so that would be northeast Seventh Avenue. I'm sorry, I see a typo. I said northeast Seventh Avenue, but not. Northeast Ninth Avenue, Progresso Drive, and other side streets. And if it's not listed, then it'll be considered other streets, or they'll just meet whatever requirements that are in place right now. For our travel lanes, we are proposing between ten to twelve feet. And for sidewalks, for primary streets, we're proposing ten feet, and along secondary streets, we're proposing seven feet. Parking requirements will be for residential, we are proposing one point five zero per dwelling unit for for uses that are
I beg your pardon. Due to the time, it's nine fifty-five. I have to ask for a vote to move beyond ten o'clock.
Motion. Second.
Okay.
I'm the second.
Ms. McCartney made the motion. Mr. Gannon had the second. That was to extend the time period for this meeting beyond ten o'clock. Is it, is there a next threshold?
Yeah.
You can go to ten thirty.
For the whole meeting, or just I have to ask again at ten thirty?
You will have to ask again at ten thirty. Do you think you're going to go for longer than that?
What? For this meeting? Yes, look at
Okay, then eleven o'clock it is.
Well, I mean, yeah, anything and or before that, right?
Huh?
Before. I just want to, okay, cool. So, yes, we'll extend, we'll motion to extend, well, I can't make it.
I moved it already, but on what time period?
Clarify that.
Oh, until eleven o'clock, please.
Eleven?
And I second again.
Okay. So just do a motion vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, none. We'll move to eleven now. Set my next alarm.
Okay.
Or not.
For non-residential uses, we are proposing to exempt the first twenty-five hundred square feet, and then the regular standard parking would be applicable. For legal non-conforming uses, we are proposing that they would have to just provide sixty percent of those standard requirements. And I should note, what is existing for that area right now, we do allow for portions of on-street parking that abuts property to be counted towards your parking. So if you have on-street parking right next to your property, you can count that as one of your parking, as part of your parking requirement. For affordable housing, the parking is at one per dwelling unit, and if a parking reduction is being requested, that would be processed as a site plan level one or administrative review, as opposed to going to Planning and Zoning Board for approval. For building design standards, we did propose some standards that would assist with providing what we consider something of like SEPT Chad and making sure that it's creating a good sense of place and creating a good streetscape for pedestrian realm. So we are proposing that building facades facing primary and secondary streets will have to provide at least thirty percent of fenestration of wall area. Building facade shall be designed to visually screen parking, parking and minimize large expanse of blank walls, and we are also provol proposing that adequate screening will be provided for rooftop equipment. Some additional requirements that we're proposing is just to provide what we would consider like buffer for the neighbor neighboring residents, so we're ensuring that loading facilities are being considered, buffer yard requirements such as wall and landscape strip, and ensuring that lighting is being addressed if there's any glare or control effects of lights for neighboring properties. So this is just providing the impact or effects of what we're proposing. So this is for Central City GMU and the Central City NMU zoning districts, which would be those zoning districts along Fourth Avenue and Thirteenth Street. We're just showing basically the height of how it is impacted by the residential. So as you can see, we're proposing that at minimum, maximum five-foot podium, which would be compatible in terms of height with the RMM twenty-five zoning district that allows up to fifty-five feet for some some of the uses there, but at least maximum height of fifty-five feet. So at fifty, at that five-foot podium, there will be that step back of fifteen feet. And then, as you can see, there's only a couple more floors that the applicants would be able to go up to because it is maxed at eighty feet. This is showing the Sunrise Boulevard zoning district, so again, providing a maximum height of five stories for the podium and then stepping back fifteen feet and being able to go up to a hundred and five feet, but also keeping in mind that they can go for one twenty-five with affordable housing, and then a hundred and fifty, which is not depicted here, but they will be able to go up to a hundred and fifty with conditional use. The zoning district that is on Sunrise, so it also wraps up to FEC Railway. This is just providing some pictures of what a six-story and seven-story development looks like, and comparing that to just a mock-up, a sketch-up of what is being proposed, that what would be proposed, for instance, along the corner of Thirteenth Street. So the zoning districts that have that eighty-foot max height. So as you can see, the picture on the top left would be at seven stories, the picture, which if you can really look at that, that coincides with the maximum height there of the the mock-up, the sketch-up on the right. And I don't know, Mr. Spence, do you want to, at this time, read into the record what you are proposing for prior, or we can include that?
Sure. So you can consider it a opt-out provision. So it would be another subsection, Section forty-seven dash thirty-seven CA, request for an application of prior zoning regulations. It would state that a property owner who believes that a development permit application processed and reviewed in accordance with Central City Mixed-Use District Regulations enacted, and we'll put the enactment date, to be more restrictive or burdensome than if such development permit application was processed or reviewed in accordance with the zoning regulations in effect immediately prior to the amendment, may make application for the review of the development permit application in accordance with the development standards, criteria, and procedures of the zoning regulation in effect immediately prior to that adoption date. And in order to apply for approval under this section, the property owner must submit to the department written notice requesting an app, the application of the prior zoning regulations. The review process for this would require that the property owner submit the written notice requesting an application of a prior zoning regulation to the department. The department shall review the same within fourteen days of the submittal. Within no more than fourteen days from the submittal, the applicant's written notice of the notice to the department shall, the department shall determine whether the requirements have met the criteria provided, and subsection D of the of the section, and that the property owner will be notified in writing by the by the department. And if the department determines that the that the request meets the criteria, the property owner may submit a development permit application pursuant to development standards, criteria, procedures of the prior zoning regulation. The criteria for review are twofold. It's that the Central City Mixed-Use District Regulations applied to the property, applied to the property are more restrictive or burdensome than the land development regulations in effect immediately prior to the adoption of the Central City Mixed-Use District, or that the Central City Mixed-Use District Regulations applied to the property are more restrictive or burdens, have are more restrictive or burdensome procedures concerning review, approval, or issuance of a site plan, development permit, or development order than the zoning regulations in effect immediately prior to the adoption of the Central City Mixed-Use District. And it provides for sunsetting of this October first, twenty twenty-seven, which coincides with Senate Bill one eighty. So what essentially this provision does, it grabs language directly out of Senate Bill one eighty in terms of the threshold for determining what municipalities cannot adopt as a land use to regulation, and that is that standard of more restrictive or more burdensome. And if a property owner feels that they can't operate under the new zoning district, they can, they just need to allege that that is the case, and and within fourteen days, well, actually, twenty-eight days. So they provide the notice, fourteen days for review, and then fourteen days for decision. It's the same relief valve that's provided in one eighty. So one eighty provides for a declaratory or injunctive relief for anyone who feels that a regulation adopted by the municipality is more restrictive or burdensome to them. They go to circuit court for that, and if within fourteen days of of them initiating the process, the city repeals it, then they don't get attorney attorney costs and fees associated with that item. So we're kind of mimicking that in an administrative process, providing for an opt-out provision for property owners in this area.
Can I ask a question, follow-up then on that?
Sure.
So we all know, and since twenty eighteen, the city has had the direction of creating this area and saying that we need to spur on development, and developers haven't gone to the hundred and fifty feet that they're currently at. So do we think that they're going to actually use this loop and say, you know, I don't like this eighty feet, and I want to go back to the hundred and fifty? Because so far, they haven't built anything up to a hundred and fifty.
So I think, yes, we've had representation from developers who, and not may, it might not be just the height, but other aspects of the regulations that they think that the current regulations are more suited for what they're, what they're, why they purchased the property, their expectations for developing the property, there are other aspects of the existing regulations that they do not feel, that they feel that the new regulations may be more restrictive or burdensome for, which is, which is why this provision was drafted and is not a part of your packet, is we've, we've heard, heard that, and we're attempting to address that by providing this opt-out provision for them. I haven't heard directly that of anyone that stated the height is an issue, but there may be other aspects of the regulation that they find more restrictive or burdensome.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. McCartney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm trying to understand, I know that that folks are here tonight to talk to us about, I'm sorry, about the height, and some are mad that it's going to be eight. Perhaps they don't realize that it's already fifteen. But I think there's an overarching, the overarching issue that we probably should address, and I want to make sure that I understand this. This has been going on since twenty eighteen, and it has not moved, or at least it has not been acted on. And now we find ourselves in twenty twenty-five, after the legislature has said, and I understand that it related to hurricanes so that people could clean up and not have restrictions, but it's still, until twenty twenty-seven, prohibits restricting in a way that is regulating in a way that is more restrictive than what is current. So that makes me wonder whether this is, at this point, you know, we've waited this long to do it, why don't we wait until twenty twenty-seven? It's an option. Because the machination to get it reviewed, it just seems like a horrible thing to have to go through when really, we've gone this far, and there's a finite period of time until you could go and and implement it anyway. Plus, there are people that have projects in the pipeline, and I'm very concerned that their property rights are being impinged by this, which gives us potential legal liability. So to say to them, well, I'll tell you what, you can come and apply to us and ask us if we'll let you go ahead and do the prior, the prior zoning, well, that's not a, that's not a secure thing to position to be in, because how do you value your projects? How do you know whether they're safe investments to make if you can't guarantee what the outcome's going to be? It's really kind of not helpful to be able to say, well, you can apply, and we might let you do it anyway, when in the big picture, we've got a law right now that says that we can't restrict, right, until twenty twenty-seven. And I understand that the city is challenging that, and so, you know, we'll see what the result of that is. It might make all of this moot. But otherwise, to come up with a whole scheme where you can, you know, kind of get around it by asking permission, kind of defeats the purpose of of a property owner having authority over his property and making decisions and investment because he doesn't know what the outcome is. And they know now, how is it, is that it's, it's actually fifteen feet. If this were approved, it might be eight feet, it might be violative of law.
Eighty feet?
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty.
Yeah. Eight stories, thank you very much, that's what I meant, thank you, I apologize. Right, it might be that, or it might not, because we might be violating law, so that's uncertain. It might not, because, well, we can go hat in hand to the city and say, hey, would you mind applying to prior zoning? That's not anything to rely on. So I feel like we're in sort of a real spaghetti bowl here on how to move forward on this. I don't know, I don't know what to do. I don't know whether to suggest that we wait. I think going forward with this is perilous and cumbersome and unworkable, but that's just my thought.
Well, well, we can make it less perilous and less cumbersome by by kind of looking at this, this measure that we're attempting to do as a release relief valve from the constraints of the legislation that we're under. This effort, as you've indicated, has been a longstanding effort. It's something that was spurred on by the Community Redevelopment Agency in an attempt to meet its goal and redevelop in this area. And the thought of having a comprehensive zoning scheme that spurs on redevelopment in this area is is the ultimate goal. And typically, the comprehensive rezoning schemes are best implemented by completing the the rezoning for all the properties so that the intent of that planning effort is implemented and available for all of the property owners. Those who feel that this, that this burdens their investment-backed expectations for the properties that they built, we are building in this opt-out measure, and we can the properties that they built, we are building in this, um, opt-out measure, and we can reduce the burden on them in this procedure as, as much as the board feels comfortable. I mean, it, you know.
But are we not to burden them at all? It's not a little bit. It's not at all. We can't, we can't restrict. Period. It doesn't say that we can kind of do it, and a little bit of do it, um, or we can make them ask us to do it, um, which is kind of like waiving your rights because you're being forced to ask for something, and you just now waived your right to, to say that you've been violated.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's kind of a pretzel.
Are there certain things of part of this that, there has to be some positives that otherwise they wouldn't be hoping to re-spur development? So are there some things in this package that, you know, if we did adapt it, or it's really, the answer is twenty-seven, do we think that there's going to be everyone coming to us and saying, no, we're going back to the old way. We're opting out on everything? Or are there some things that some landowners are going to say, this is really great, and I'm more interested in spurring redevelopment?
So, so that's, that's the hope. But again, we've, we've heard from landowners who, who say they want it the way it is. And as, uh, Member McCarthy has pointed out, the state of the legislation is that if, you know, it's not clear on what it means to be more restrictive or more burdensome, and, and they've raised their hands and said, hey, this stuff is more restrictive and more burdensome on us. We don't want it to apply to our property. There, there's other ways to go about it. We can, the, the city can go ahead and adopt the text language and put off the rezoning, um, of the properties to a later date. We've had, uh, we have a process in other areas, although it's not, the, the circumstances are a little different, that are more of an opt-in approach, um, that I, and I'll tell you why I'm a bit hesitant about that, but it is still an option, uh, where you adopt the language in the code, you have these new zoning districts created, and then the city provides some incentive for property owners to individually come in and rezone their property to the appropriate zoning district within the scheme. The issue here, well, we have a similar scheme that we do in the Uptown area, where we have these Uptown zonings, but in the Uptown TOD, which you've addressed earlier to, um, tonight, we allow, uh, on the city's dime, folks that are in those districts to come in and request a rezoning to that, that area. Also, in the northwest, we have certain zoning districts, the, um, NW RACs, that were initially meant for the corridors around Siskiyou and so forth, that have now, um, because of the underlying land use within that area, have now encroached into, uh, the community more, which, which is what the underlying land use allows for, but, you know, in terms of not having control over where individuals are seeking to put these specially-designed zoning districts. In this particular area, our underlying land use are traditional land uses. All of these properties are, uh, commercial and underlying land use. So the distinctions that this comprehensive zoning scheme has put out with regards to where these, um, zoning districts are, uh, I don't know how we tell the individuals when they, they're coming in for the rezonings, hey, you can only do this particular one at this location versus the city doing the rezoning and saying, well, if you want to opt out, raise your hand and let us know. But, and, and I do understand, uh, the, the concern about that in and of itself being an additional burden and maybe violative of the law, but, um, but there, there are those options. What, what I would encourage the board to do, because a lot of time and effort has been put in, that the text amendment does move forward, um, and we can kind of discuss, what do you want to do in terms of the rezoning of the properties?
You know, I think it's worthy of discussion tonight, but I'm wondering if it's ripe for a decision on our part tonight.
I, I think the text amendments are ripe for, for a decision, but the rezoning of the, the properties, we can have some discussion on how that should look.
I think that would be a, a bad idea to do the rezoning tonight, personally.
Well, does any part of the tax amendment have any similar implication? Or is it just the rezoning? I guess it's separately the rezoning, right?
Well, correct. So if we have the text amendment on the books, um, they, they're not applied to any property until those individual properties are actually rezoned to those districts. So we'll have a section of the code that is effect, in effect, not effective anywhere because it hasn't been applied to any particular property, but it's available.
It's available, well, it's sort of the vehicle for the new zoning, which is the second part, right?
Correct.
It says, when you have the zoning, it'll be this.
Correct.
Um, which might not be until, I keep looking up there, because that's where the information is, until 2027, potentially.
Correct, or, or individuals can come in and, and request rezoning.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to get. Is that in the tax amendment? Because I think that's burdensome.
No, that, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be burdensome at all. That would be the private property owner coming forward and asking for the rezoning. There's, there's, there's no government push for them to do it at all. That would be of their own volition.
To do which rezoning, though? I'm trying to understand.
To any of the rezoning districts. So similar to what we have in Uptown, what we did with Uptown, it was that, uh, at the time, we adopted the text amendment with all the proposed zoning, zoning districts and regulations. And then at a later date, developers came, and the incentive was that staff would process the rezoning. And that's why you will see some, I think we've had some just as recent as a couple of months, where we'll have, well, we'll process on the behalf of the developer, the proposed zoning district that they would like to adopt. So it is voluntary, so the, it's, it's a good mechanism because they can opt into saying, we want this zoning district and these regulations that come with these zoning districts. If they don't, they can keep the existing zoning district and adhere to the requirements of that zoning district that is in place.
So let me understand, with the text amendment, they can look at the text amendment and say, forward thinking, well, I'm, I'm okay with that, and I want to do that.
Correct.
And they can wait, otherwise, until or unless the zoning is actually changed, and they could go along with that.
Correct.
Or be subject to that.
If we, it, it sounds like Mr. Spencer's saying we can adopt the text amendment, and then later on, we can do the full-fledged rezoning, or we can adopt the regulations, and we can have the, uh, the property owners to voluntarily come in, voluntarily come in to opt into those zoning districts.
Yes. So what I'm saying is adopt the text amendment, adopt UDP T 25009, so that we can place the zoning districts within the ULDR. So there'll be tools in the toolbox that are available for use. If the statute is lifted, then we can come back to you and do the rezoning of the property that's requested under item number five. Or an individual property owner within the community can come forward to you before it's lifted and request the rezoning of their property to one of the districts that are applied.
So the, the only value in doing this is that it leaves the door open for someone to voluntarily select that zoning?
Yeah.
Otherwise, you could put both of them off, but this gives someone, it puts it in play only to the point that someone could voluntarily subject themselves to it.
That's correct.
And then later, the zoning could be developed, which matches it, and is imposed, but at a point where it isn't putting the city in peril for.
That's correct.
Overreaching.
That's correct.
Essentially becomes an opt-in and not an opt-out.
Correct.
That is correct.
Yeah.
So maybe with the text, it does provide current owners who haven't redeveloped the tools to be able to redevelop.
Yes. So as I said, the, the effort has been a long effort that the CRA has undergone, and their assumption is that the proposed text language would spur redevelopment in this community, um, and that those who will take advantage of it will, will, will see the vision and, and move that CRA area in the direction that this text language allows for. But as was mentioned with the current constraints and state law, we do run the, the risk of, if we actually rezone property to this zoning district, of being in violation of that statute, which is why, you know, I was proffering the opt-out, but then we have this ability for people, rather than forcing their properties to be rezoned and running that risk, we're just going to have the language in the code and allow them to opt in by saying, hey, I want, I want to rezone my property.
Restrict yourself at your own selection.
Correct.
I, I wasn't really done with my presentation.
(laughing).
But I only had one more slide. I only had one more slide. Well, it's just to say that we are proposing, if we can move this forward, to get on the, the most available, fastest available city commission, uh, agenda, which most likely put us into December for first and second reading. And, and now I can say thank you, and I'm here for any questions, and I can step away. Thank you.
Any questions right now for staff? Okay. Seeing none, thank you. So we can certainly hear the people for item number four, which is the text amendment, right? And then debate with, okay. So we will call the individuals who would like to speak, starting with Mr. Tony Liggett.
Mr. Chair, could I, could I, a point of clarification, and it might be beneficial to the, to the folks who are here.
Yes.
The text amendment, what they're here to talk about is really the zoning aspect of it, correct?
Which we're not.
Which we're not, which we're not doing.
They're actually talking about the text amendment as well.
Okay.
So they're.
What aspect of the text amendment are they addressing? I just want to make sure that everybody here understands that this is like a two-part thing we're maybe doing, and what are they, what are they addressing now?
Correct. So, so it's a, they're addressing both, sort of, because our, the number five has the areas that the zoning districts were proposed to be applied to, and, and I believe that most people have analyzed the text amendments based on where we're proposing, we were proposing to, to place them. So I think it's good to hear what they have to say with regards to the text amendment and where the, the CRA and the city envisioned those districts to go, but understand that at this point, it seems like the board is not prepared to move forward a recommendation for the actual rezoning of the properties.
Yes, so.
I'm not sure. I, I did want to point out that we do have a representative from the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Mr. Bobby Tanico, that is here on behalf of the board, that did sign up to make a note, but I, I think he wanted to speak. I'm not, so I just, I don't know if you wanted to just have him go, since it is a advisory board member, and then members of the public, your discretion. I just wanted to point out that he is from the board.
Do you wish to speak, sir?
Are, are we going to go over that case number, or does that matter?
The second one, the, the zoning?
Number five. I just, uh, the board just wanted me to come read a letter to you all. So I'll do that. Thank you for letting me speak. Dear Chairman Teague and Planning and Zoning Members, on behalf of the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, we are writing to reiterate our support for the proposed mixed-use zoning associated with case number UDP Z 25002. As reflected in our formal recommendations made during the CRAB meetings held on January 13th, 2025, and February 5th, 2025, the board supports the proposed rezoning as a critical step towards advancing the central city community redevelopment areas' long-term goals for economic vitality, housing diversity, and walkable mixed-use development. CRAB recognizes the zoning proposal as an important opportunity to support the long-term redevelopment vision for the central city area as outlined in the Central City Community Redevelopment Plan. We believe this zoning change will support a more vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable future for the central city area by enabling a broader mix of uses, fostering local business growth, encouraging reinvestment, and enhancing neighborhood character. We respect, we respectfully submit this letter to reaffirm our board's position and to request your continued consideration of our recommendations as a part of your review process. Thank you for your time and continued partnership in shaping the future of our city. And they also directed me, if you have any questions, to ask the planners as well. I'm zipping it from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and what you've said. Maybe you have any questions about that? Nope. No joke. So Mr. Tony Liggett.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, I have a, a very short PowerPoint presentation, but, but I want to start with just one recommendation. I, I know this is probably taking away from my time. I'm really confused about what you're doing, and our neighborhood has some serious trust issues about this process, if you're familiar with what happened at the CRAB at all. If tonight, they're presenting some big legal issue, and you're gonna do something different and just do the text that people don't know, and half of our neighbors have already left, we wouldn't mind waiting a week. We've waited for twenty-three years, I'm, I'm sorry, a month. If we could come back next month, that's, we, we would prefer that. I'll just start with that. But I also want to, uh, just, these are papers that I brought to, I want to put on the record, um, and it's my understanding the text amendment itself, I'm not sure, includes the heights, includes the districts, and includes the heights. You've probably received communications from us. If I could start my presentation, it's up there now, and here's a copy of it and some papers. Our neighborhood has been deeply engaged in this process. Just to let you know where we are, Middle River Terrace.
Real quick, did you have a question about what was happening? Like, at first, you started with a question about the process, and now you're ready to do your presentation?
I guess my testimony starts with, I really wish you would delay this for a month, for, for those of us who aren't experts can figure out what's going on, and we could take it back to our neighborhood and try to figure it out, because we've been really engaged, and I, I would prefer that, but, um.
City's opinion with delaying this for a month, or position on that, to allow further review and so forth, and some, the ball kind of moved here a little bit with.
Oh, I, I don't have a position on, on deferral.
Shall I ask the board?
Does the, the CRA have any position?
No. It was on. I think I'm in. As you've mentioned, and everyone knows, this has been a long time making, um, but I guess we wouldn't be opposed to, um, coming back next month if, if we had to, but really the desire is to kind of move it forward and get it before our Board of Commissioners and the City Commission. My name's Clarence Woods. I'm the manager of the Central City CRA.
Okay, thank you for that. Trying to do this very, how about the members of the public? If you raise your hand, would you like another month to review this and, and understand more the text amendment? Or do you want to move forward and speak tonight, uh, and keep the ball rolling? So I'll ask, do you want to have it tonight? Do you want to speak tonight? Raise your hand. Okay, how about we push it a month to next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Now I'll bring it back to the, thank you, I'll, I'll bring it to the. Now I'll bring it back to the, thank you, I'll bring it to the board for, do you wish to postpone this?
I'll make a motion. Could they be number one on the agenda?
Absolutely, I think so, yes.
To not be at the end of the year.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm sorry, you guys, I was gonna, can they be first?
Yeah, absolutely.
I know, you guys have been amazing. I'm sorry, you know, this is, so, you've been in great spirits, and you've been very patient. They've confirmed you will be first on the next agenda.
So can I make a motion?
If I may, before there's a motion, I do want to try to clarify on staff's behalf what the expectations are from us for the deferral, because
Let them know what they can do to help the community, right?
Because I just want to clarify that we're not proposing to change what we are presenting in front of everyone tonight in terms of the text amendment and the rezoning map. I think what we want to just figure out, and this is where I need that direction, is how we are proposing to adopt the ordinance. So are we adopting it with an opt-in version, sort of like what we have with the Uptown model? Or are we adopting it based on the provision that Mr. Spence originally mentioned to adhere to the Senate Bill 180, so?
I think it depends, is the answer.
And that's what, yeah.
Should I ask a question for Mr. Spence? What is the posture of the lawsuit?
Oh, we're at early stages.
So it's
It's just
Getting going.
It was just filed. So we have, I wrote it
It certainly won't be done in a month.
No.
Right. So, and this is why I'm trying to figure out, or I'm trying to clarify that, if we go with the Uptown version, the only difference that we're doing now, we're keeping the text amendment and the rezoning the same, all we're doing is stating that property owners would be able to opt in to rezoning their property.
So I understand your concern. I think, I think the public is genuinely confused as to the process, and we understand that we're not changing the text, we're just going to take time to explain to them the implications of Senate Bill 180, why they're not proposing to do the rezoning at this time, and what the other options in terms, because I'm just, I know I didn't hear much of discussion from the board, but Member McCarthy has raised a very serious issue with regards to the opt-out option, so it seems to me that whatever version we're moving forward with will be an opt-in version, but that hasn't been decided as yet, but that will be a part of what we explain to the community moving forward. So we're going to defer to, I believe the board's going to defer to the next
Meeting.
Meeting.
Yes.
And we'll have an opportunity to just kind of discuss those issues, not, not the substance of the text amendment, which we've already addressed with the community at outreach efforts, but just that issue.
And based on the discussion that went around, would we only be needing to vote on the text amendment item, or would we also be reviewing and going over the zoning one? Number five.
Well
Because of the question.
We, we'll discuss, we'll discuss, we'll discuss the, see, since you're postponing the public hearing
Yes.
I, I'm, we're, the staff is not prepared to withdraw the rezoning. We're prepared to have you vote on that, and that would require you to go through the public hearing. And what I'm hearing from the community is that they're just generally confused by the process right now, so let's just take it back, clarify for everyone what it is, and we'll make a determination as to whether or not the rezoning part of it moves forward to the next meeting. But we would ask that you defer both.
Okay, very good. So then I will call the question.
Was there a motion and a second?
I motion to move number four and number five to the beginning of the agenda of the next month's meeting, which I believe is November 16th, 19th, 2025.
My second. My concern with that, this is just my opinion, is I don't think that puts us in a different place. It just kicks the can down the road, because the underlying problem hasn't been resolved, in my mind, which is, does this run afoul of the statute? And if it does, I wouldn't vote to pass it, and I don't know why we'd be addressing it. That's just my thought.
All right, so I would say the text amendment, as I stated, does not. The application of the text amendment through the rezoning process, maybe, that's the question. So as I stated, we would recommend adopting the text amendment and delaying the rezoning if the board is uncomfortable with that.
Mm-hmm. And that allows the individuals to have more time to review and understand the text amendment, which we presumably will vote on, you know, vote on. Number five remains permanently planted in Minneer. Okay? You understand, is that, I know you're concerned, but I believe, you know, they want to
I think that the residents want to talk about the zoning.
They do.
Right? That's, they want to talk about 15 stories, 15 or eight. I think that's what the folks are here to talk about. The text amendment is not the vehicle for that. The zoning is, so
If I may, so they'll be able to talk about it at the next meeting. I think all we're saying is, we're going to give them a month to absorb what the Senate bill means and what the different implications of it are. But again, we would, now, I think we're just discussing an opt-in, so I think that actually doesn't take away property rights, it offers more opportunities for redevelopment, if that's the, if that's the direction the board wants to go.
Okay, I understand.
If I can try and provide more clarity to it again, so the text amendment contains everything that the community is concerned about, the height, the setbacks, the uses, that's in the text amendment. Under those text amendments, we call it, give me one of the CC, we give them, we give them a name, what's the zoning districts proposed? So we have like the CCMU. The second item, item five, is just the map, and says, this area is going to be governed by the text that you adopt, and four, for CCMU, will govern this area. What we're saying is, don't apply it to that area, which is a different consideration of where these regulations will be applied, in terms of the map, is that second part. But the first part is what the community is really worried about, is the height restrictions, the uses, all of that is in that first component and can be discussed. The second component is, where in their community are you applying those things? Where on the map are you going to place that? And that's what we're saying, the, even though we're discussing hypothetically height and all of that, where it is applied is what would cause the problem with regard to the statute.
And hypothetically, in the event of an opt-in scenario for a zoning change, the community would then at that time be able to be here at a meeting to discuss and to talk about and to have a
So it would be just like, it would just be like, just like someone who's coming
On an individual basis?
Say, I want to change my B2 to B3.
Correct.
And go through the process of asking you for the B3, but in this case, you, they get all of the benefits of the CMU now, if you adopt the CMU.
And there would still be the public
Yes. But, but we can clarify that for the next meeting, and make it crystal clear for both the community and the board.
Thank you. Okay, did we have a motion?
Yes, we did. We had a second.
So the first, Mr. Donaldson, and then the second was Ms. Scott.
Our second is motion.
And she seconded it. To postpone these items to the next meeting, September 19th?
November 19th.
November, I beg your pardon.
At the beginning of the agenda.
I was looking up there, yeah, November.
September might be right.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. You can call it.
So it's, it's to defer?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's to defer UDP T 25009 and UDP Z 25002, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
To the November.
Ms. McCartney?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torres?
Yes.
And Chairman Teague?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Members of the public, thank you again. We'll see you first up front. You guys, we're troopers tonight, thank you all very much, I'm sorry. Say what? Adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
We need to reschedule.
Hold on, hold on. David?
Chair.
Donaldson, Brian. Hold on, hold on. Hang on, hang on, everyone. There's my minutes, I clean myself up. All right, but we got the good of the city and everything?
Yeah, this motion from last one.
Yeah. Okay, bring it back. We ready? Okay. So for the good of the city, the motion that was made in the last meeting was not seconded on the record, so
I'll make it again.
Please. Ms. Scott's going to make the motion from last meeting.
Oh, yes. I make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Board requests the City Commission to consider directing the Planning and Zoning Division
One moment, one moment. Lady, sorry.
You guys, okay. I move that we, Planning and Zoning Board, we request the City Commission to consider directing Planning and Zoning Division to evaluate large-scale townhome projects, to determine whether such projects should be subject to review and approval by the P&amp;Z Board. The intent of this request is to establish a formal threshold at which townhome projects should receive additional oversight and provide an opportunity for public input through the board's review process.
Do you need a quantification of how many units?
Well, I was going to put 10, but I thought we should really leave that maybe to staff? I don't know.
And what do we think is a large? Large is very big.
Mm-hmm.
If I was a commissioner, I wouldn't know how to vote on that, because what's large?
It's a good point.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna get the communication, and then they're gonna say, okay, staff, why don't you come up and see what you think? Unless you guys want to say a specific number. I'll say 10.
10 units or 10?
Units.
10 units. You guys like 10 units? Okay, you want me to redo the motion?
I'll second Ms., the motion, Ms. Scott's motion.
Okay, and that's 10 units, correct?
With 10 units.
Okay. You want me to rewrite, reread this now?
You can reread it
Okay.
If you want.
Planning and Zoning Board requests the City Commission to consider directing Planning and Zoning Staff to evaluate large-scale townhome projects, specifically projects consisting of more than 10 units, to determine whether such projects should be subject to review and approval by the Planning and Zoning Board. The intent of this request is to establish a formal threshold at which townhome projects should receive additional oversight and provide an opportunity for public input through the board's review process. And when you go, Patrick, you can talk to them about that large project that we had no input on. Remember last month?
Yes.
I think it was 30, 60?
60-something, I think. I was crazy. Anyway, that's my motion.
Mr. Donaldson, you second?
Yes.
We'll do a roll call vote.
Turn.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torres?
Yes.
And Chairman Teague?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Anyone?
We've got 10 more minutes.
I know, we gotta extend it.
We're all sleeping.
All right, motion, we're adjourned, thank you all.
Motion to adjourn.
Good job, members, long meeting.
First, one second.